So good evening, everyone. Welcome to our March 1st Town Council meeting and the start of Women's History Month. On that note, I have invited our township engineer Lenny Laporte to introduce the new Assistant Engineer. So we are very pleased to see her via Zoom and hope to meet her in person soon and to welcome her to West Orange. Already exchanged emails. So we look forward to meeting you in person. And the good news is I'm hearing from DPW that Lenny is actually delegating work. So that is great news. So Zazabeth, welcome. Welcome to West Orange.
Council President, I have to do the opening statement.
Yes.
Sorry. Okay, this is to inform the general public that this meeting is being held in compliance with Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975. The annual notice was emailed to the Star Ledger and filed in the Township Clerk's Office on November 24th, 2021, and published in the West Orange Chronicle on December 2nd, 2021. Councilwoman Castellino?
Present.
Councilwoman Matute Brown?
Present.
Councilwoman Williams?
Present.
Council President McCartney?
Present. Thank you. Lenny, Mr. Laporte?
Good, good evening, everyone, and thank you for the invite. Tonight, also with me, although in a different room, is Zazabeth Carbella. She is the new Assistant Municipal Engineer for our township. Zazabeth is a licensed professional engineer. She's also a licensed land surveyor. She's a certified municipal engineer as well as a certified floodplain manager. She has a Bachelor of Science degree in civil engineering from New Jersey Institute of Technology, a master's degree in environmental engineering, also from NJIT, and she also studied engineering technology and received a degree for that, which led her to meet the requirements, education requirements for a land surveyor. Zazabeth joined us just a little over three weeks ago at the beginning of February. She is certainly knowledgeable, educated, knowledgeable, knows how to apply various principles of engineering and her experience to West Orange, doesn't necessarily know the ins and outs of the town, but she is learning very quickly. We're a fairly sizable town, so it's not going to come overnight. It's going to take some time. But I'm very pleased that she is here. As you said, I am delegating her work because now I have somebody to delegate work to. And if you have any questions for me or her, she's here. So I'll introduce you to Zazabeth Carbella.
Carbella. Thank you very much. Very impressive resume. Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you.
Would you like to say a few words?
Sure. I am very excited about this opportunity. I definitely believe that it's going to make good use of my education and experience to handle the many challenges of this position. I have over 18 years of experience, and I have had the opportunity to manage and work in a variety of capital improvement projects in the private and public sector. So I am very, very hopeful and looking forward to working with Lenny and learning with Orange. And I want to thank you all for giving me the opportunity to introduce myself and look forward to meeting you personally, hopefully, very soon.
Yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you. President, if I could just stick my two cents in?
Of course.
Just, you know, we kind of joke with Lenny that he's never been great at delegating, and it's, you know, ultimately a credit to him because he wants the things done right. And no one knows the town better than Lenny. I think we all could agree to that. But she's already been a huge asset to the community. We have just tentatively been talking about redoing one of our parks, and we had a meeting about it on Monday. And Zazabeth had already had three different versions laid out, all the engineering. It made the conversation detailed, and it made it fruitful. And we were able to leave that conversation with a decision and a plan. And I just don't know that without getting Lenny help there, you know, that we could have made such huge strides only a few days after the initial conversation. So the administration's delighted to have her, excited to work with her, and really pleased that she's here, and we wish her the best of luck.
Excellent. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you. John, I saw your hand was up. Did you want to say?
I can't say it any better than the mayor.
Great. So thank you.
Council President, if I may, I have not changed the color of my hand, but I hope you can see it. Zazabeth, I just wanted to say, this is really special, particularly on the kickoff of Women's History Month, that we have such a qualified, educated, I'm hearing a little accent, so I'm going to guess Latina, Hispanic, Arab, yo. Very happy to welcome you to our township. So thank you so much, and I look forward to meeting you in person as well.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Okay. Any other comments? No? So we welcome you to West Orange. We have a lot to do. Also on tonight for Women's History Month, I have invited Jen Tunncliff. I believe, I really don't remember the year, but I do remember that the West Orange Women's Club, I tried to research the start date of that. And
1931.
Thanks, Jen. 1931. It was not in the information that I had. And I know, you know, I knew women that were involved in that and worked so diligently with their funding. And then they had amassed amount of money, $50,000. And I remember that they came to the council, and they were going to bequeath that to the West Orange Scholarship Fund. And it was just such a wonderful dedication, and it dissolved, really. And thanks to you, thanks to Jen Tunncliff, to bring that back to life. And, you know, even during COVID, there was still, there were still meetings, and there was still activity. So I wanted to, really, the reason I was going to do my Town Council liaison announcements, and one of them was about a request to move the start date to open the Rent a House up from March 1st to March 25th, because, thanks to the West Orange Women's Club, they were able to get entertainment, paper mill, you can talk, you can elaborate. But when I saw that, I just thought this would be a perfect time to thank the West Orange Women's Club for all the work that you're doing, not just for seniors, but for all parts of the community. So Jen, welcome. Welcome to our council meeting, and you can fill in the rest.
Thank you so much. I'm delighted to be here, and I appreciate having the opportunity to tell you a little bit about what we've been doing. As Council President McCartney said, we reinvigorated the club back in about 2019. We started with a lot of meetings and interest groups. Our club proudly can boast, we are well over 100 members right now. And during last year, which was really our first year of operations, we were able to raise over $11,000 to give to mostly local organizations. Here in town, we support, we supported the food pantry. As President McCartney said, we've did a lot of work with seniors. We did a Broadway event with them last June that was really well received. We always do our Valentine's Project, and we made over 600 Valentines this year to give to all of the, or a good portion of the home, the senior housing here in town. The Valentines are all handmade. We bag them with chocolate. They're just beautiful. They're all individual. And it's a really nice way to remember our seniors at a time that's been really difficult for them. And Laura Van Dyke has been a wonderful partner with us on all of our senior projects, and that's been really terrific. So in addition, we also gave to the Mayor Sunshine Fund this year to help the displaced residents of the building on Northfield, because we know the town had been helping pay for some of their rehousing and hotel expenses as they were looking to find new housing. So we were happy to be able to do that. We also gave to a local organization here in town called the Empowerment Zone that does programming and some housing for young people who've aged out of foster care. So we were really excited to learn that there was a place in town that was helping these young people get into colleges and university and getting jobs. So we really felt very strongly about that. And we've also been giving to Rachel's Coalition, which does a lot of work with victims of domestic violence. So we've been working with them as well. So we've been doing a lot of great work. We have a lot of fun. And I thought, if I may be permitted, to just tell you a few of our fundraisers that we've done, we just wrapped up our Valentine's fundraiser, which was a cookie box that a local woman who you may know as Puris Pelitas, our popsicle lady, Pamela Beardsley Alfredo, she makes these beautiful boxes for us with cookies that you can decorate for Valentine's Day. So we just wrapped up that fundraiser, and we are about to go into our golf outing fundraiser, which raised probably the most money out of all of our fundraisers last year. It was a huge surprise to us, but the women came out in droves. And our Vice President Jackie Ward, her husband Greg, works for Kemper Sports, which, as you all know, also runs Rock Spring. And we were able to partner with Rock Spring, and Greg came out and donated all of his time and gave a terrific tutorial about golfing. And those of us who've never picked up a golf club before, we're, you know, hitting those balls pretty far by the end of the couple hours with him. So it was a lot of fun. So that'll be coming up in March. So watch for the news for that. We have a website, and we also have a Facebook page. So anybody who's interested, please join us. And our next meeting coming up will be March 16th at 7:30 PM. This one will also be Zoom. We do have a partnership with the United Presbyterian Church here in town, and hopefully, once they're accepting visitors back, we will be back there. I'm keeping my fingers crossed that it will be back live and in person in April. So hopefully, that'll be. So those are some of the things we're coming up. We're probably going to do another Mother's Day box for all you moms out there. We did a lovely tea box with scones and tea last time, and it's just a nice way to treat your mom on Mother's Day. But because it's Women's History Month, I wanted, thought it might be fun to just, wanted to tell you a little bit about the founder of the Women's Club. And her name was Jane or Jenny Cunningham Crawley, and she was influential in the field of journalism. She became the first woman reporter employed by a metropolitan newspaper, and this was in New York, to write in the office on a daily basis. And she served as a regular correspondent for out-of-town daily papers and to manage a women's department of the newspaper. And she also taught journalism. So, and the origins of how the Women's Club started were because of this woman. So she was the founding president. And she, this club was really formed out of anger, because back in March of 1868, the New York Press Club held a dinner in honor of Charles Dickens, and at the end of his second reading tour in the United States. So men, and even with even slight literary connections, wanted tickets for this event, and so did two of the best-known and most quoted women writers of the day. One of them was Jenny Cunningham Crawley, and the other was Sarah Willis Parton. Despite the fact that Mrs. Crawley's husband was on the executive committee of the club, the male membership was outraged that she should dare to make this a promiscuous social occasion. They had refused to admit women. So Jenny's response to this sexist treatment received from the influential male organization was to found a club cirrhosis, which really became the first Women's Club of note. So her aim was to unite women to reach their political, or excuse you, their potential and cultivate their place in society. So the Women's Club started right here in our backyard. There was a club in West Orange, not West Orange, in Orange. That was one of the original clubs that was founded in 1872. And for those of you who may not know, the Women's Club was really influential in getting women on school boards. They also started Douglas College down at Rutgers, which was one of the first colleges for women in New Jersey, and did a lot of work with Douglas, bringing in science programs and other things. And so just a few of the things. Oh, and they also preserved all of that land along the Palisades. That was one of the other things. So they were very rooted in environmental things, which we've also been working with. Last year, Susan had invited us to come and participate in the townwide cleanup, and we brought a great group of women out there for that and had a lot of fun and cleaned up a lot of space. So we're sticking to our roots, and I hope this gives you a little bit more about the history of our club. There's, I have a whole book called The Century of Challenge that has lots of information about all the women who have been influential in starting the Women's Clubs across New Jersey and in the United States. And we are a part of a larger organization, both here in New Jersey as well as nationally.
Wow. Jen, thank you very much. I'm going to make sure that my membership stays current.
Yes, please do.
Thank you for that historical perspective. Very appropriate. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you for inviting me here today. I appreciate it.
Councilwoman Castellino, I saw your hand.
Thank you, Council President. If you just don't mind, I just have to commend Jennifer. She does double duty. She's also our current School Board President of our West Orange School Board. And a few years back, when I was on the school board, and the remaining membership of the former West Orange Women's Club came to give their last funds to donate to the West Orange Scholarship Fund, it was just so sad, because the women talk about all the great things that Jen just mentioned, and how, you know, the lack of interest and the club kind of dwindled down. And it was just really sad. And I know a few of the women that were involved then are really excited now, that this club has just grown to such a large participation with so many, with their membership. So, you know, congratulations. I know that's efforts of you, your board, and all that you do. And it's really just, you know, so appropriate that you're here this evening for Women's Month. And same for you, Zazabeth, you know, welcome to our township. And to have such strong leadership is, I know Mr. Laporte is going to benefit, and I, you know, we're excited to have you here. So thank you. But thank you, Council President. I just want to jump in, because I know Jen has also worked so hard through the years, and thank you.
Great. Thank you. Thank you all. Thank you. Thanks, Jen. Keep up the good work.
Thank you. Hope to see you all at one of our meetings soon.
We'll have another cleanup coming up soon.
We'll be there.
We also have the chief here. So recently, we have our Didn't turn my phone off. Sorry about that. Chief, I know we had some reports that came out this week that were glowing, and I wanted you to share that with the community.
Well, thank you for having me, Council President. Special thanks to our Township Historian and Public Information Officer Joe Fagan, who put this slide presentation together. And it's something I couldn't have done on my own, and probably couldn't even change the slides on my own. So he's going to handle that for me as well. Back in January of this year, I completed 25 years as your police chief. And, you know, when I look back on it, it's just like, where'd the time go? But, you know, I have to thank, I've worked for three different mayors. So I have to start with the current Mayor Parisi and thank him. And you can't just imagine how many people in the council have come and gone in 25 years and plus, you know, the years before that. I have 42 in total. Three different business administrators, many of the, a few of the same department heads, but many new ones, and tremendous turnover in police staff that I think there's only about maybe a half a dozen people that were hired before I made police chief in 1997. So, you know, that's just like, amazes me when I look at those stats. So the next slide is, what is the Uniform Crime Reporting System? I always tell people it's analogous to like NASDAQ or Dow, because that's something people are somewhat familiar with. It's eight crimes that are, that make up the overall crime rate, but they're split into four violent crimes and four property crimes. So you have aggravated assault, forcible rape, homicide and robbery are your four violent crimes. And you have arson, larceny, burglary, and auto theft are the nonviolent crimes. We also track bias in DV, which I'll talk about in a minute, but they don't drive the crime. They're not included in the crime rate numbers. So the Uniform Crime Reporting System has been around since 1930. It generates reliable statistics for use in law enforcement, includes data for more than 18,000 law enforcement agencies. And these include the state police, your major cities, counties, municipalities, colleges and university campus police. It's a voluntary submission to the, it ends up with the FBI, who does an overall analysis of crime in the United States. However, we submit ours through the New Jersey State Police, as does everyone in New Jersey. So as I said, the crime index total is the culmination of your violent and your nonviolent crimes, murder, rape, robbery, aggravated assault, larceny, burglary, rather, larceny, motor vehicle theft, and arson. Domestic violence and biased crime, I said, are not part of the crime rate. You have a violent crime rate and nonviolent crime rate and an overall crime rate, which is crimes per thousand people. So the domestic violence was, began to be tracked in 1984, and the biased crime was 1988. If you look at, it's kind of hard to see on the chart, because the font's very small. But if you look at what I found really interesting is domestic violence skyrocketed to 431 incidents in 2020, which is when, you know, COVID basically hit. We're down to 175 now, but it like doubled from what it was, you know, in previous years. You'll see it climbs steadily from back in 1985 up to the current. I think that's because women, it's predominantly women. It's not a, it's not a gender bias statute that applies to anybody in a dating relationship or cohabitants. However, it's, you know, it's predominantly women victims. And that's the genesis of the statute was to protect women. So, you know, if you look at the way the numbers climb, I think that lends itself to people trust the system, trust the police department. They're more inclined to report domestic violence and to keep it in the shadows as it was years ago. Our biased crimes remain, you know, pretty low. We're at two. Our highest year ever was in 1992 with 15. But, you know, it's usually anywhere between one, two, three, or four. Murders are the same way. You know, they're usually maybe one every three years, I would say we average. The forcible rape is single digits. It's sometimes double, but never more than 17. And I came on in 1980, and that's where we're tracking this from 1980 to present. Your robberies are down to 13. They're 32 my first year on the job. My first year as chief, there were 54. So, you know, it's dropped, dropped quite a bit. Aggravated assaults, they're down to 30. Burglaries, which I'd find really interesting, you know, when I, when I first came on the job in 1980, you go out and work like the 4 to 12 shift, and people come home from work. And, you know, the first thing you did was you got burglary costs. If you see, we had 549, my eyes are trusty, burglaries back then. You know, we have 72 now. It's just amazing how much that's dropped. Barsneys are down. Motor vehicle theft is down tremendously. I mean, people remember back in my first year as chief, we had 551 stolen cars. Now we had 52 last year. As I said, arsons are about the same. And that's what, that's what's driven this down. So, you know, it's a trust from the community in reporting crime to us, keeping us informed, forming a partnership. It's trust with Baron Council and coworkers. And it's, you know, especially the people on the street that actually, you know, where the rubber meets the road, as they say, these are the guys that get the job done, the gals that get the job done. We have some promotions coming up soon in the next week or so, and well deserved. It's good to see that, you know, it's always good for people's careers. We also just had up and coming people take the sergeant's exam, the lieutenant's exam, and the captain's exam. So those results will be out in a couple of months as well. And we're doing good, and we're moving on. Get by this COVID and hopefully back to some sense of normalcy. And you can see, you know, even just with the little increase in normalcy in the last year, the domestic violence has dropped tremendously. So that's about it for the report, but it's great news, and I'm real happy to be able to share that with everyone.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Chief, for this information and for sharing that with our community. Thank you. Any questions? Any comments on the chief's report?
Council President, if I may? It's not, not a comment on the report, but I did share with the chief last week. And since we are in public, I just wanted to share an experience that my husband had in his office. There was a, he's an attorney, by the way. He had a consultation. And when, after the consultation, he advised the person, the individual that, you know, he didn't feel that there was a case. The individual became very irate. Things got a little hairy, let's just say. And the paralegal called the police department. And the paralegal, once everything was said and done, and that person lives in Bergen County, could not stop being surprised at the level and skill of de-escalation that our officers presented, you know, with the individual. It was simply a lot of, you know, talking, you know, when the more the individual became irate, the calmer the officers responded. So I just wanted to share that with everyone, because I think it's really telling of the leadership, of the training, of the pilot program that the police department has undertaken. And we're proud of that as well. So Chief, I just wanted to share that publicly, having had a, you know, not my experience, but my husband's experience, to just say that I'm really proud of our police department and the direction that it's taken. And kudos to you for your leadership, Chief.
Well, thank you. And, you know, as I always like to point out, we're the only police department in all of Essex County that's nationally accredited. So, you know, that's, that's an appointment of best practices and keeps everybody on their toes.
Excellent. Councilwoman Matute Brown, thank you very much for sharing that story, because when the header was on top of one of the pictures in the chief's slides, that word de-escalation was actually standing out to me when I was reading through the passage that was there. Thank you for sharing the experience. Any other comment? Okay, seeing none. We do have, Chief, thank you again. I know that we don't like to add resolutions to our agendas at the last minute, but I feel that this is, I want to say, years, months, years in the making to, to have, to have a resolution worked out five o'clock on a Sunday night, Monday night, to, of course, add to our agenda. And we have the mayor here to walk us through the resolution that was placed. I don't want to say anymore because it's too exciting. So this is, you know, breaking news, and the mayor's here to tell us about it. Thank you for joining us.
Council President, thank you for, for having me, for entertaining this late edition. As we all know, we try to get the agenda set by Wednesday, maybe Thursday morning, but the rest of the world doesn't always work on our schedule. So we didn't have this, these matters resolved by then, but we do appreciate the Council President agreeing to put on the agenda, and of course, the council for entertaining it, because it is of importance. And I'm going to ask the Council President, as well as the council, to indulge me a little bit as, as I think I've earned, I can be a little long-winded sometimes. But sometimes I think it's important to, to tell the whole story. You know, we would all like to believe that matters are, you know, summed up in three sentences, and, you know, our shortened detention span, you know, to tell the whole story. And truth is, you can't. And this is an important story to tell, and kind of just to recap, both for the council as well as for the public. And of course, you know, I'm talking about what I've joked many times over the years, you know, often was deemed a curse word in town to even mention the word redevelopment, especially Main Street redevelopment. And it's been a long and bumpy, and sometimes not a very good story. But, but I think it's important that we, in context, look at where we are today. And this exciting new step is a great new chapter to this story. But the fact is, as much as Phase One battery building prison redevelopment project has been maligned and cursed and challenged in court, and the topic for, you know, countless social media threads and countless hours in public meetings, the fact is, the Phase One
The fact is, the phase one battery building project was a hundred million dollar investment in our downtown. And sometimes people lose sight of that, that, uh, there was a time where that was the single largest non-waterfront redevelopment project approved in the state. Now, I don't know that that's still the case, but, um, that's a significant project. And, um, just to recap, I was reading some stuff on social media today where people were still criticizing it as a failure. The fact is, it's ninety-five percent occupied. Um, and if you factor, given the three hundred and thirty or so units, when you factor of maybe a four percent vacancy ratio for people relocating, moving in and out, you can make the argument that at ninety-five percent occupied, it's nearly a hundred percent occupied because it's never going to be fully occupied. And two thousand twenty-one, the township collected over one point two million in pilot payments. And, uh, though that's significantly more than the battery building ever generated as an industrial use, the fact is, it's also twenty-nine percent higher than was projected, simply because the market has improved, as we all know, in terms of rents and home sale prices. So we're collecting significantly more money than we even projected initially, as controversial as that was. Now, um, the township can say that not only we were right to approve this twelve years ago, thirteen years ago, uh, it's actually producing more revenue for the township. There's been significant criticism over the retail space, but the fact is, there are three tenants in the pipeline. They are going through the permitting process with the township now. One is a, a pharmacy operated by Health Habit. Now, you might say, as I said, uh, there's pharmacies all over the place. So truth is, this is a more unique pharmacy type of use, more specialized individual care, a different, uh, type of model than the Rite Aid and the CDSs that we see all over, all over this space. There's also a sports medicine tenant being, uh, going through the permitting process and also a BK Lobster. Now, though I'm not familiar with them, there's several in this area and in North Jersey as well. So, um, there are three spaces going to fill the retail space. That will only increase the pilot program. As, uh, the council may be, uh, may remember, and certainly some members of the public may or may not know, the pilot payment the township collects is based on a percentage of total revenue. So that just makes the project, um, even better financially. But it, it does, and maybe, maybe some of that's on a personal level that I should set aside. But it does, it does frustrate me when people criticize that project. And, um, you know, we've all can talk about the battles we've had with Prism over the years. The fact is, in two thousand six, they were the only developer in the whole Northeast who was interested in that project. And they survived the, uh, the worst recession since the Great Depression. They survived three years of litigation when residents of the community sued the project, ultimately went all the way to the state Supreme Court. Um, and Prism, you know, stuck it out and they eventually got, uh, got the funding and, and built this project. And I think regardless of some of the bumps in the road, um, I think we should all be proud of phase one. It's a beautiful project. If you've, uh, hopefully some of the residents and hopefully all of you had had a chance to see the apartments. They're beautiful. The amenities inside are beautiful and I, I think that's something that we should all be proud of. Now, that gets us to why I'm here today because as much as we can view phase one as a huge success, the fact is, undeniably, phase two has been a, a point of frustration, especially over the last handful of years as the economy and the real estate market specifically has boomed. We couldn't seem to get anything going there. Um, I know the council members, no, I don't think we, we ever talked publicly about it, but they, they came to us with different variations of housing projects. They came to us with a logistics project, which, you know, commercial use would have been great, but we all envisioned, you know, endless tractor trailers up and down Main Street, which didn't seem, uh, exciting either. So, so that was obviously a, a point of frustration. And I guess it's, you know, where tonight's story starts. How did we get to where we are now? Um, from, from all that. And the fact is, it started with, with Jay Wayman. And I'm going to start my conversation tonight by thanking Jay, our chairman of the Economic Development Commission. Uh, Jay, last spring introduced me to, to Whoopi Goldberg, a resident in the community for many years, but I had never had the opportunity to meet her. And she ultimately introduced us to the MBS group, which is a studio group out of California. And they came, I'll talk about them a little bit more in a minute. They came in, in May and they toured the property, they visited Town Hall. We walked around the neighborhood and spent a good deal of time discussing, discussing the phase two property. Main, mainly the Barton Press property, the Public Works property and, and the several properties that are owned by, I think, six or seven different property owners along Lakeside, along Ashland, uh, and along the backside of Standish a, a little bit. So we started, um, talking about the idea of building studios here. Now, obviously, um, wasn't approved at the time. They didn't own the property. So these were all just very general conversations that grew out of what we all know in our own lives is a booming market for studio space. There's, um, I think we all probably have more networks and streaming apps on our, on our TV than we can even identify. Everyone is streaming, everyone is producing content. And with that huge demand and appetite for content, there's a huge demand and appetite for studio space to shoot it. So that really was the basis and the genesis of those early conversations. So realizing that there would be tremendous hurdles to overcome to get to that point. The first hurdle was the fact that we had a redeveloper who not only was an approved redeveloper, they owned the land. You know, so back to my earlier part of all the criticism that Prism has often taken, some of it deserved, some of it not deserved. The fact is, you know, we chose them because they bought the land. And as we all know, ownership is a pretty significant legal leverage i- in this country. So, um, not only would it require changing the redeveloper, but they own the land. So we had, I had several conversations with, with Prism in, in the spring and they were very amicable. And, and I was as complimentary as I was tonight and deservedly so of what they did despite the overwhelming challenges, uh, to get us through phase one. But, uh, you, you know, we said that it was probably time to move in a new direction, that the township wanted to pursue other opportunities, even if the studio option wasn't realistic. We just felt it was time that if, if they couldn't get something built there, it was time for us to move in a new direction. We had those conversations with the council at the same time. And, and for several weeks, we had very amicable, very good negotiations with Prism and their legal counsel. And, um, you, you know, we're real close to an agreed upon number. And in the eleventh hour, as often happens, it, it blew up and ended up in, in litigation. And as, uh, I don't think anyone here, it's no secret, you know, there was, was a press release issued that talked about the township being sued. They named the MBS group in the suit, they named Whoopi and, and her, her company, as well as Jay and, uh, any other number of entities. Me and John Gross, I, I think as well. So that started a very lengthy legal process that, um, you know, as we all know, can be much more painful than never, never wraps up as neatly in sixty minutes as Law and Order does. So this has been going on since June. And I guess now is the time, uh, to really thank Rich Trank, who, um, you know, lived this project and the council president and the former council president, Tu Brown, who was in court for all this too, could really attest to, you know, Rich has lived this project and got us to this point. And, and I think only after Rich, I gotta thank Judge Moore, like I had never met Judge Thomas Moore, who just happened to be assigned the case, um, but really took an interest in it. And when we needed to get everyone in the courtroom, he got everyone there. So we've, um, in these last several months, we've spent four, uh, long sessions in his court. And he, he, you know, mediated this and, and got us to an agreement. And also have to thank Matrix, who's done environmental work for the townships for years. Uh, Will Lance, our redevelopment council. Um, and again, I mentioned the council president, the former council president, want to, want to thank you as well. And maybe specifically former council president, only because of timing, you know, she's spent a lot of time uh, on this as well and, and getting, getting here. So it was a big, uh, you know, what sometimes I refer to as a really big deep breath. But, but after that, we, um, we got an agreement and, um, and we got this closed, thankfully during that. Uh, and again, I think this is a credit to Rich because he said, this is going to take a while. Why don't we work on some things on parallel tracks? And with the council's consent and, and agreement and support, while the lawyers were hashing this out and yelling at each other in court, the council approved the funding, which was, was huge. And I know, look, I sat on the council for years. I know that was a huge commitment the council made to approve the money to buy the land. And you also approved the money to buy the other land, the land it doesn't, Prism doesn't own. And thanks to the planning board and again, the council, we updated and amended the redevelopment plan to also be in place now to account for studio space. So though we could have just let it all play out and been frustrated, the fact is, um, you know, the council was part of this process and we, we took advantage of the time that it was being fought in court, uh, to get us in a position where we are tonight. And where we are is to ask the council to approve a resolution, um, naming the MBS group or their subsidiaries, whatever entity they might decide to, to call them, uh, here as the interim redeveloper. That allows the township to enter into more formal negotiations with the MBS group to, um, you know, to build studios uh, in, in the phase two property, phase two property. Though this project would most likely be staged. Um, they envision on the, the largest part of the property, the Barton Press property and the Public Works property, they envision six to eight sound stages and then eventually building ancillary and support structures along the rest of the redevelopment zone, mainly down Ashland and, and Lakeside, meaning, um, buildings for sound and artistic and design and all that other stuff that would be associated with, uh, with the studio space. Now, what really drives this is a couple of things. I mentioned earlier, the huge demand right now, you know, for studio space and for content, but also in a credit to our state government, you know, we all, again, like to complain about all levels of government. But in this case, the state of New Jersey has been, and I guess I would say that they've seen, they see the benefits that studios can bring, uh, to any neighborhood. Uh, the state of New Jersey has passed a very aggressive, uh, New Jersey film and digital media tax credit, where a representative from the MBS group has told us it's one of the most beneficial tax credit programs in the entire country. So there's been a huge push from all these studio groups, uh, to be in Jersey, mainly because of its proximity to New York. You know, New York is still the hub of this Northeast, whether we want it to be or not. But space in New York is at more of a premium than it is in North Jersey. The cost of living in New York is even higher than here. And, um, you know, quite honestly, since COVID, uh, which I, I think is not to be underestimated for a significant part of this whole dialogue. You know, COVID has taught people that maybe they don't want to go to New York anymore. So a lot of the people who work in the various studios in New York live in New Jersey and a lot of them are thinking, I don't want to go to New York anymore. So, um, so this is not just a, a West Orange initiative. There are towns all over the Northeast vying to get studio space. And there are companies looking to build studio space all over too. We think we are in a really good position, uh, to, to make this happen now. Now that we own the land, we have to deal with some of the environmental issues. But also while all this was going on, we've been mapping that out as well. So, um, we've had tentative conversations since the spring with the MBS group. We've talked very tentative about what a financial structure could look like, uh, just to make sure that we weren't thinking something they weren't or vice versa, that they were thinking something we weren't. Um, and they believe, uh, a, a deal is to be made here. The state has been, again, hugely supportive, not only with the film tax credit, but because we recognize that there's going to be additional environmental issues we have to deal with despite the funding that's been put aside in escrow from the, from the Prism purchase. Uh, the New Jersey Economic Development Authority has been hugely supportive. We've had several conversations and meetings with them, um, basically taking direction from the governor because the governor wants this to happen. The, uh, EDA has pledged, uh, significant resources for us to deal with the environmental issues and make this happen. And I mentioned once before, and this goes back to the conversation we had about executive drive. The state's new aspire program, though, uh, a lot of people are reading about it. Everyone's still learning about it because it's so new, but it's, it's significant funding that's been set aside for projects just like this, uh, that are going to have affordable housing components and housing components and infrastructure needs. You know, we've talked with the EDA as well as tapping into aspire funds. So not only do we feel that the state's tax credit program is, is attractive for studio space, but there's significant actual dollars from, from a couple of different state programs, which we believe are going to help with this and help make this, um, possible. So we're, you know, super, uh, excited about all these things kind of coming together at this point. Now, I'm sure like, like me a couple of months ago and most of the council and certainly members of the public had never heard the MBS group. When, when, uh, Whoopi Goldberg first talked about introducing us to them, the first thing I did was Google them. And obviously I've got to know some of them since then, but just, um, just for clarification, they are, um, the, the North America's largest operator and builder of studios. Uh, they have a huge presence both in, um, in Europe and Canada, uh, as well as the states. They are really aggressively acquiring and building. They are owned by, uh, Michael Hackman, the Hackman Capital Partners. That is the world's largest independent owner of production space. So they are well established in the industry. They are really smart and savvy at what they do. Um, and they are well funded and they are significantly interested in coming, uh, in coming to West Orange. They, uh, not only do they find that the state's attractive, um, but they, you know, specifically cited this location as well as our community is. Uh, for some of the things that we all know, we are very close to New York, uh, though there's, um, an interest, as I mentioned, to be out of the city, uh, for a couple of reasons. You know, no one in the studio world is naive enough to think you don't want to still be close to New York. So the fact that we're close to New York's important. We're close to highways. Uh, we have a lot of housing opportunities here, um, and a lot of universities that they found as, um, and I had never given the thought to, but the fact that Seton Hall, Montclair, Rutgers, Newark, you know, that these universities are so close. Um, studios often tap into, um, people in the universities to, uh, to work and enter into careers, uh, in this industry. So we are really excited about the opportunity and the possibility. The interim agreement is, um, I don't want to say it's not binding, but it's not super binding. It doesn't commit them to anything. It's simply, uh, as a step and an important step in the process of redevelopment that we name a developer that we can then start negotiating with, um, to enter into a deal. It's, um, I think, I don't have it in front of me, but Rich can weigh later. I think it, weigh in later. I think it said it at six months. Um, but given the tentative conversations we've had up till now and, um, and, you know, we've had only recently, uh, we believe that, um, if a deal's to be made, it's going to be made much sooner than six months. They're, they're motivated, we're motivated, the market is, um, is super motivated, the state's motivated, you know, right from the governor's office on down. It's, um, you know, this West Orange project, uh, is getting a lot of attention. And obviously some people here and some people listening will, um, you know, Google MBS group, just like I did. But they, in New York alone, they own Steiner Studios and Silver Cup Studios, which is frequently on the news as well as, you know, five or six others. They own, I think, twelve or thirteen studios in California alone, all the, um, you know, a lot of the big studios that again, that you see all the time. So we are, uh, lucky to have them here. We're excited that they're interested in, in West Orange. And, um, although I said earlier that it seems like redevelopment has been a topic forever, we recognize that though an exciting step in the last eight months, it has seemed, uh, pretty, um, pretty painful at times. We know that this is really just, though, at the end of a very lengthy process, it's really just the first step, um, to making this happen. But, but all the, all the pieces are aligning. And, um, uh, I mentioned Rich and of course thanking council president, the former council president. Uh, I think I mentioned Will Lance, our redevelopment council. But I mentioned the state briefly. Some of that really kind of comes from, uh, John McKean, our Assemblyman, former mayor. Uh, John was really the one who introduced us to the EDA. He's been part of those meetings. Um, and, and he's been, um, working as hard as he can as our representative to make this happen. But, um, but the state's excited, the administration's excited. Um, we finally closed on Prism and this gives us a great and exciting opportunity to take advantage of, of a really aggressive and demanding market, um, looking for studio space to continue to develop content that is, is filling up all our TVs. So we understand it's, wasn't on the agenda, uh, as early as I know council members sometimes like it. But, um, we had hoped to close earlier, but we just closed yesterday. Wanted to get this on and, um, looking forward to, uh, to move forward and appreciate the council's consideration. I mentioned again, just, I guess, just to close out with a couple of things, we're not naive enough to know that if this approves, you know, this is, you know, smooth sailing the rest of the way. We believe that a deal can be made with the MBS group. Uh, we believe both sides are equally motivated, but we also recognize there are other issues. We believe that a deal can be made with the MBS group. Uh, we believe both sides are equally motivated, but we also recognize there are other issues. There's going to be infrastructure issues and um, we're gonna, in addition to the aspire program and the EDA program, we're going to hope to count on a funding through the infrastructure uh, funding from federal government that'll flow through the states. We have to move DPW. That's always been an issue with phase two and administrations been working on different options um, there. And we still have other property owners that again, I mentioned earlier, the council approved the funding for, but we haven't finalized negotiations with them, though that we have been ongoing. We've clearly been focusing most of our attention on Prism. So that still has to be done as well. So we know that this simply is the first step and triggers a whole lot of new work that the administration has to has to do, closing the books on Prism uh, once and for all. But um, we think this is a huge opportunity for the town and um, appreciate the council's time and and appreciate your consideration and approving this resolution tonight.
I appreciate. Thank you so much. Bravo for your vision. Um, thank you for moving us in this direction. And I I just the fact that you gave credit where credit is due for your, not only your own vision and to Jay Hayman for the introductions. And to Richard Trank, I saw firsthand just last week in court his hyper focused, his driving force that was able to move this forward. And to Councilwoman uh, Matu Brown too, that she did spend last year in that I only did two times, um, but uh, you know, all day events. Very intense. So I appreciate the work that Councilwoman Matu Brown did also. And our legal team was so impressive. And I have to say Matrix New World with the environmental experts that were brought in. They were so well prepared. So I was so pleased to have been able to approve those resolutions to authorize the work to be done. So thank you so much for this breaking news. Any other, any comments, Mr. Trank? I see you're on. Councilwoman, yes, Richard?
Um, if uh, if if Councilwoman wants to go first, it's up to her. Uh, are you? Um, but I'll just add a couple of comments. Obviously, um, uh, the mayor is uh, understated his role uh, in in getting us to where we are at. Um, uh, he literally has done sketches himself. He's, you know, he always undertakes too much on on itself. Uh, and and uh, that obviously can be frustrating, but he really has led us uh, thoroughly throughout this. And uh, uh, you know, as the mayor said, uh, this was an arduous, litigious. Um, I'm going to spare some of the the words that I've used in other forms because they're not appropriate now and we are uh, at where we needed to get to. And and that was uh, involved a lot of give and take. But I I just want to remind uh, the the town and this council went on, um, I believe it was September fourteenth after the September eighth mediation session with Presiding Judge Moore, that uh, then Council President Matu Brown was at, that we went to about seven o'clock at night with the mayor, with uh, the the uh, Director Operations, uh, Chief Abbott, who's always been uh, incredible. And of course, our BA now, our Business Minister John Gross, who has uh, so much savvy and talent. We came to you and we suggested and recommended and you approved 12.5 million. We stayed true to those numbers. We did not pay one more penny than you approved. Um, what we did was a- as a result of learning different things and being concerned that we understand what we were undertaking. Uh, we had to go through the process that we went through from September eighth to literally yesterday. Uh, when we closed and the final wires were executed at four fifty seven PM by Mr. Gross. So um, we, everything, while while maybe the members of public didn't know all the ups and downs, and there was a lot of all of that, that Councilwoman Matu Brown uh, probably has the battle scars uh, scars from and certainly uh, the mayor uh, threw each of us uh, into it. Um, thi- this was a process that was collaborative on every single level. And again, I can only thank the mayor for his leadership, but also again, as the mayor said, uh, Councilwoman um, I mean, two brown was was l- literally available 24/7, never hesitated. Even when she was done being council president, because of the continuity that she had. And I thank you, Council President McCartney for saying, yes, it made good sense to keep the continuity with court and with all the other players. Um, uh, including some very, very um, uh, astute, sophisticated, challenging um, uh, personalities on all ends, including me. Uh, but but we got there and and that's the most important thing. And and we got releases. This was important. Uh, MBS said, you know, we we never bought coming into town. They literally said, we flew into town to meet the mayor and meet Whoopi and have lunch. And we walked out and we got sued for $50 million. And they said, this lawsuit is your problem. And so we accomplished getting rid of that. Uh, we didn't ask for it, but we accomplished the the final resolution of it. And and that's again, was a pretty uh, substantial task. So so again, I appreciate the comments and I appreciate everybody on the team. Um, Carmella Sessler and Rob Beckelman at the um, at the uh, at the Lentz firm were awesome, along with Everett Johnson, who was in the background. And then again, uh, the Matrix folks, as was mentioned, Alison Molnar worked till three thirty in the morning looking, going through every ticket on 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 some uh, former work that had been done. Uh, and and uh, Rich Britton, and we have a conference call tomorrow at nine AM to get into the the next phase of this. Uh, so the team was amazing. Of course, as as you said earlier, Lenny uh, Lapore was always available, took this on his own shoulders whenever we need him and has such a wealth of background and knowledge. So thank you, Council President. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilwoman Catalina.
Yeah, I I just want to congratulate everyone and all involved. Um, this is such a game changer for our downtown that I just can't even begin to articulate for so many years. Um, you know, this with all the, you know, being attached to downtown to li- alliance. And I'm really excited for Director Brill and all the all the uh, our our downtown committee members. It just brings such and our business owners who have hung in there for so many years. This is just such a great opportunity for all of them to have such an economic surge come into our downtown. And um, you know, the first motion picture studio uh, is on Main Street. It just, just everything as the mayor stated, everything just just lot lines up. When he was first telling me about this uh, many months ago, the first thing I thought is a Black Mariah. And he, I remember you saying, Mayor, uh, uh, that's one of the things that a attracted Ms. Goldberg to the project. It's because it's just so exciting. Everything just fits um, on one in um, I'm a person of a faith and belief and we've waited a a long time for something uh, really wonderful to happen to our downtown. And uh, I'm very confident this this is it. And look forward and 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 really excited that we're all a a part of this. So so thank you all for all your time uh, that you spent. I know all day in court while everyone has uh, uh, other jobs. Probably you didn't get cell cell service while you're trying to do your other job. Is is never an easy task. So thank you all who worked on this uh, for for your time. And uh, I'm just really excited for our next downtown alliance meeting. So thank, thank you, Council President. I just, I just want to share that.
Thank you, Councilwoman Catalina. Councilwoman Williams.
Thank you so much, Council President. So just echoing all the comments that have been made. Thank you, Mayor, for even having the foresight, the vision and the fortitude um, to just create this opportunity for the great city township of West Orange. And this is not just transformational for our downtown community. This is going to be transformational for every municipality that touches West Orange. This absolutely is going to put us, elevate us and take us to the next level. And anything and everything um, that comes into play and falls into place post this opportunity is just to be thankful. And 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 the level of gratitude that I have um, for you, um, for this administration, uh, for the opportunity a- and 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 for what you have from the bottom of your heart in the past, I I I don't want to say 30 years because that might not be the accurate number. But Mayor, you've been in government for at least 30 years, right? If plus or minus. This is and has to be one of the biggest accomplishments of service. Because when we think about what we want to do, what we want to accomplish as an elected official, why we serve. We don't do this for the money. We do this for the people. And to have an opportunity to really just transform the community that you were born and raised in is is something that leaves me speechless. It speaks from the heart of what you have given as a testament of service to the community in which you were raised. And while even now, we don't understand the magnitude of this opportunity. And they're still going to be naysayers. We know that until this actually is visible, there are always going to be naysayers. But from the gate, I I just want you to know that I thank you. I appreciate you. I appreciate us um, for having the 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 wherewithal to give you the faith, confidence and trust that was necessary to move this project forward. I am honored to be a member of the Town Council of West Orange at this time. It is going to be monumental. If we ever thought that we would go down in history, i- it's happening right now, real time. So again, I just want to say thank you. Um, I appreciate you. Councilwoman uh, Matu Brown, thank you. I appreciate you. People don't understand when I say we are not part-time council people. We serve 24 hours of every single day. No matter what everybody else has to say and what they believe. Until you walk in these shoes, you have no level of comprehension. And 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 I, again, I I'm just, I'm grateful, I'm thankful. And it's a great day to be a town council person and the mayor in West Orange, the residents of West Orange, just get ready, put on your seatbelts and get ready to enjoy the ride. Things are going to change for us. Ca- it's just enormously. And and I'm just, I'm just happy to be a part of what we're going to do. Thank you.
Thank you for your enthusiasm. Councilwoman Cindy Matu Brown.
Thank you, Council President. I'm going to start right where um, Councilwoman uh, Williams left off when she said, until you are in these shoes, you will never understand what this beast is. It is no secret that when I ran three years ago, I'm sure the administration wasn't all warm and fuzzy with with welcome signs and pom poms ready to receive. But we have learned how to work together um, and and compromise. And we have the same focus in moving West Orange forward. And I have to agree with you, Councilwoman Williams, that it is really different once you sit behind the dais and understand, first of, first and foremost, learn the work, understand the work, understand the challenges and the compromises if we're going to move forward. Um, I can't tell you how excited and still very frightening this is an experience. Because this council took um, a leap of faith, understanding that whatever happened with the former re developer um, and whatever happened with um, MBS uh, group. There could be, there could have been, and there could be a possibility that, you know, things don't work out as as we want them to, simply because we're still, um, the administration is still um, having those conversations as the mayor just expressed. But at the end of the day, one thing is for certain, and this is what gave me the faith and confidence and the courage um, to move forward with the decision to support this is because we knew that Prism had not moved. They stood still for so many years. And it was time for a change for us. So that was a very courageous, bold move to support um, that change. Because at the end of the day, we're left with the destiny of what our downtown is going to be. Um, hopefully an entertainment zone where we all don't have to leave West Orange to um, grab a meal to, you know, uh, meet some friends for coffee on Main Street. There's going to be a lot of a lot of changes, hopefully, if we successfully negotiate um, this next step. Uh, which is why if those of you who are reading the resolution, you'll read that resolution to say conditional. Um, because there are some caveats with respect to time constraints that we still need to meet. Um, so I am excited, but I'm still you know, gonna take those deep breaths. Sometimes I feel like I'm hyperventilating, but um, I think everyone has, everyone on the council, everyone on the administration has the same goal and focus that we all have in town as residents, because we live here as well. We pay taxes as well. But this is a great opportunity to reimagine and take control of the destiny for West Orange. And to you, Mayor, I've only been um, an elected official, never even planned to do this, um, but three years. Your son was 24, I mean, two, two months old, I think, when when you ran and were first elected. He's 24 now, 26. But I I don't know how you do it. It's quite the learning experience for me. You know, I don't pay attention to a lot of the social media, but I do listen to residents. Um, and still at the end of the day, I have to weigh what I hear. Um, after I research and and just go put my head on the uh, on my pillow at night and sleep with complete confidence that I've made the best decision um, that I could. I do not vote with um, um, you know, for political expedients. So this was very challenging for us, but I am certainly grateful to the mayor for you know, going out there on the limb, making sure that these conversations that were happening were legitimate and then coming to the council from the beginning of my council presidency. It felt like this was going to be a tremendous year for you, Mayor. And I certainly appreciate your patience in working with the council. Um, you know, you got a few no's from us last year, but we worked through that and we're here today. Um, and I'm proud of all of my council colleagues and the administration. I I don't envy uh, Mr. Gross at this point because now it's balls in your court with the finances. Um, but to Mr. Trank, and I think my first vote, Mr. Trank, for your contract, sitting as a council member was a no. But I have come to but like I said, I have come to learn how to work with each and every one of you. I've seen the dedication and devotion that you all have for this municipality. And um, yeah, it's not a part-time job. Thank you for all your work and let's um, roll up the sleeves and see where we land next. I'm very excited for it. Thank you for your time, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Uh, just thinking back on those dates, um, and I am so looking forward to work to being on the planning board to to see how we will design this or develop this uh, with MBS and and just sharing all of these ideas and the potential that's there. Because it was one of my first votes back in 2006 to even designate that as an area need redevelopment. So yes, it's been a long time and always kept our eyes on the prize of what that could material or what could materialize there, never thinking that this is where we would be. So it is wonderful, wonderful news. Uh, Councilman Rutherford.
Thank you, Council President. I'll echo some of the comments made earlier about my colleagues. Um, congratulations, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Trank, Mr. Gross, uh, my council colleagues, but most importantly, congratulations, West Orange. Um, I campaigned on this two years ago. Reimagining downtown, and this is now coming to life. It is going to anchor a tremendous amount of investment along that entire corridor. And um, everyone that had a hand in that um, including me, uh, should be uh, congratulated for it. So uh, I'm looking forward to great things down there. I think all of the residents and all of the businesses in that corridor have a reason to celebrate. Uh, and I'm looking forward to seeing this actually come to fruition uh, in the near future. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Mayor, just keep us posted and thank us, thank you for bringing us along uh, for the ride.
Yeah, Council President, uh, again, thank you uh, all you for for being part of this. We we made big, bold steps. Um, uh, just uh, again, just to to rehash, the council gets a lot of credit. You know, when we purchased Rock Spring Golf Club a couple of years ago, that was the single largest approval the council was ever asked to make. And two years later, we asked you to make almost twice that uh, for this. So we knew the council. So we knew the council um was taking a big chance, believing, you know, what could happen here. But ultimately, to have uh to have this in our control and move in a new direction, but we think this can be an exciting new direction. And as I think Council, Councilwoman Matute Brown mentioned, now it's, you know, now it's John Gross's turn. Because now um him along with Mike Canley, the township's financial advisor, we're gonna, we're gonna figure out a deal and hopefully come back to the council soon uh with updates on that. So we're excited. We thank you for your consideration and um excited to to take this new, this new journey together.
Council President, uh with all of that now being on the public record, um we do not need to have the executive session. I had, I had requested that when it wasn't clear we were gonna be able to get the yes and close. And as a result of uh Presiding Judge Moore's assistance and and uh with you and and Councilwoman Matute Brown and and everybody else, we don't have anything else to discuss uh that would be necessary tonight in executive session.
Okay, thank you very much for that. It's been a busy last four days. Yes, thank you. Okay. Madam Clerk.
Okay, this is to inform the general public that this meeting is being held in compliance with Section Five of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter Two Thirty-One, Public Law nineteen seventy-five. The annual notice was emailed to the Star Ledger and filed in the Township Clerk's Office on November twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-one and published in the West Orange Chronicle on December second, twenty twenty-one. Councilwoman Castellino.
Present.
Councilwoman Matute Brown.
Present.
Councilman Rutherford.
Here.
Councilwoman Williams.
Present.
Council President McCartney.
Present.
Will everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America.
And to the Republic of America, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible,
The council is now in their public meeting.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Clerk. One day after the Pledge of Allegiance, I almost wanted to say amen. Um, and I would like to ask, uh, right, I would just really like to ask the community to keep the people and the families and the children that are under siege in the Ukraine um in our thoughts and prayers. It's just, that's, that's really all I can say. You know, it's been reported that over half a million people are displaced, seeking safe shelter and refuge. And um I just, let's just keep them in our thoughts. Thank you. Madam Clerk.
Now's the time for public comment.
Yes.
I I just feel the need um on behalf of the council to just thank you for your your patience. We normally start this part of the council meeting at seven PM and we are a little bit delayed. Um, so we do appreciate and thank each of you um for your patience during our amazing presentation uh of of all the news that we had and wanted to share.
Uh, thank you, Councilwoman Williams. It was almost as if I could have started a public comment and then had the mayor speak. Um, I was a little anxious for him to make that announcement, but but thank you. So, public comments?
We have Joe Fagan ready to speak.
Yes, Joe.
Thank you, Madam Moderator, and a good evening to you, Madam President, council colleagues and members of the administration. I'm Joe Fagan, Public Information Officer, and thank you for the opportunity to address the West Orange public this evening. COVID nineteen has inflicted financial hardship on many of PSENG's customers and left them struggling to pay their bills. As a result, a large number of our residents, perhaps due to circumstances beyond their control, may have fallen behind on their utility bills during the pandemic. Residents should be aware, however, that the state moratorium on utilities being shut off due to lack of payment will end this March fifteenth, which is less than fifteen days from now. According to statistics, West Orange Township ranks the twenty-sixth highest in New Jersey for utility bills in arrears. PSENG wants their customers to know that there are generous programs and services that can help those who are behind in their utility bill. This is very important because unfortunately, about sixty percent of those who qualify do not apply for the deferred payment arrangement programs. Information about these programs have been provided to us by PSENG and are on our Facebook page and website. The easiest way to enroll in a deferred payment arrangement program is to call PSENG Customer Care at eight hundred three five seven two two six two. I'll repeat that phone number. It is eight hundred three five seven two two six two. The West Orange St. Patrick's Day Parade will make a triumphant return to Main Street after a two-year hiatus due to COVID. In the interim, I have been fortunate to hold the distinction of being the last Deputy Grand Marshal to march up Main Street in twenty nineteen. That will change on Sunday, March thirteenth, when Grand Marshal Mel Dangler leads the parade up Main Street. The parade begins promptly at twelve fifteen in front of West Orange Town Hall. Everyone is urged to come out and celebrate this longstanding West Orange community tradition. As mentioned today, March first is the beginning of Women's History Month. In celebration of that, I would like to mention the earliest record I could find of women's sports in West Orange. It dates to October nineteen fourteen, when girls were invited to participate in forming basketball teams for league play at West Orange High School, then located on Gaston Street. The girls' league proved both successful and popular. In nineteen sixteen, the mountain, the Montclair Bluebells Girls Basketball Team played the Boys Team of St. John's of Orange at West Orange High School. The girls' team beat the boys fourteen-ten. It was a defining moment that raised some eyebrows, but showed the girl's sports was a serious business. It wasn't until decades later, in nineteen seventy-two, a law was enacted, commonly known as Title Nine, allowing girls the opportunity to participate in high school sports. In nineteen seventy-two, the number of girl athletes in high schools nationwide was just two hundred ninety-five thousand. Today, it is more than two point six million. Tonight, as we begin Women's History Month, let us finally recall the circumstances as girl's sports began in West Orange over a century ago. Thank you, Madam President, and have a good meeting.
Thank you, Deputy Grand Marshal Fagan. Thank you very much for that information and again, historical perspective. Plenty to be proud of. Uh, Madam Moderator, any other hands raised?
Yes, next up is Mark Chase. Please state your name and address for the record.
Okay, I think I'm on there. Uh, my name is Mark Chase, one ten Eagle Ridge Way, West Orange, New Jersey. I thank you all, council members, for all the wonderful work you've been doing, uh especially on the town developments and all that. Um, I have several questions and I I noticed a few people have left already. Um, one of them was that on the agenda, it mentioned something about steep slope. Uh, working on the steep slope situation on on developing. Uh, so I wanted to know if there was anything added to that uh uh that situation about building on steep slopes and all that, or what the intention was for this agenda. Uh, that was one question. Uh, my other question is, um, all the development that's going on and all the wonderful things that are going on, are are there any considerations in the future of any kind to lower property taxes? Because of all the developments and stuff, and once they happen, and with all the new things that are coming into West Orange, is there any possibility that property taxes might get lowered? Because when the mayor mentioned that New York is a lot more expensive to live in, their property taxes are a whole lot less than ours. And yes, there are other things that are more expensive, but I think they sort of wash themselves out. Uh, that's number two. Number three is, um, when are they gonna open Town Hall? That would be a wonderful thing. Uh, that's just a question for that, so we can, I can make more progress on things. And also on the agenda was something about the cannabis uh regulations and the uh fee assessments that they were gonna impose. And also, I was hearing uh something about changing some of the zoning that required uh the B-one, B-two I to be more um more in line with what the needs are, because there are very few need, there are very few I zones in order to do cultivation and manufacturing. And I was hearing that they're gonna allow certain B-ones to be in the cultivation manufacturing. So I'd like to know when that might transpire and and happen and when that might get approved. Um, I think that covers my questions. I'm sorry if I asked too many things.
Oh, not at all. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chase. We will listen to a public comment and then respond uh right after we close public comment. Okay? Thank you.
Next, we have uh Rosary Morelli. Please state your name and address for the record. I'm not sure. She won't. Okay, I guess we'll come back to Rosary.
Okay.
Next up, we have Joe Kukoviac. Joe, please state your name and address for the record.
Joe Kukoviac, Grandview Avenue. Good evening.
Great.
As we hear the potential for progress downtown, we need to remember the liability side of the balance sheet, the cost, not just the asset side, the possible progress, which of course, we've heard before. The now withdrawn Resolution Thirty-nine Twenty-two for Executive Session, which is a secret from the public, cites Prism litigation and contractual negotiations. As we've sort of heard tonight, uh the litigation filed by Prism against the township shows a February first letter from Town Attorney Mr. Trank. Prism refused to allow examination of soil at fifty-five Lakeside in the redevelopment area, supposedly supposed to have taken place in January. Quote from Mr. Trank, "The township cannot and will not blindly agree that if soil comes back with substantial contamination, which is is contrary to Prism's claims, that the township will blanketly accept an unknown liability. Township may never recover uh from Prism's shell entities." All of this begs the reality. Prism was required to perform its redevelopment obligations years ago, which included the obligation to remediate any environmental issues of fifty-five Lakeside Avenue. If Prism had acted in compliance with its responsibilities on the applicable agreements, this entire issue would likely have been resolved years ago. Obtaining basic information as to any contamination uh will greatly inform both the township and Prism. Point out that this is the way the Prism has largely behaved for fifteen years, as Mr. Trink points out and further highlights the question of why we would agree to settle litigation with a twelve million dollar settlement with Prism. Another Trank letter to court February twenty-second cites a much more contaminated soil and much higher levels of PCBs, precisely one thousand five hundred and seventy-eight tons of soil at fifty-five Lakeside. The letter reports three areas of total mercury contamination that exceeds twenty times the regulatory level to be considered the EPA characteristic hazardous waste. I assume that the word site is missing. So how much is this going to cost and who's going to pay what? Resolution forty-four twenty-two for conditional redeveloper. Who else did the mayor council member speak with about this potential for to be a redeveloper? Is this grand conditional redevelopment to the entire redevelopment area? What's going to be demolished and what's going to be built, as referred to in the, in the legislation? What is MBS's redevelopment experience? Why do we need to enter in this agreement? Is the mayor discussing a thirty-year tax abatement and pilot here? What's the status of purchase of the re- uh the redevelopment area properties by borrowing up to twenty million dollars? Has anyone figured out how much property tax revenue we will be losing? My calculation is more than six hundred and sixty thousand dollars a year. How are you planning to replace that? What's the interest rate on the twenty million dollars that borrowing to buy these properties? What's the status of buying these properties? The letter provided, uh, in the letter, Mr. Trank referenced a sale and purchase agreement that was sent to Prism on February fifteenth with changes. What were those changes? When are you going to post the sale agreement to the town websites so people can know what's going on? Once again, the mayor's failure at transparency on an issue of great public importance continues. And the members of the town council continue to allow him to keep vital information that is clearly public record by being in Superior Court files from residents and taxpayers, who are the ones directly and financially negatively impacted by these actions that are not disclosed. The mayor brags about Phase One, never mentions the thirty-year tax abatement and even in lieu of taxes that are costing taxpayers millions of dollars in future tax revenues that would otherwise come to the township. These are ghost revenues that taxpayers will have to make up. I'll also point out that Prism failed to make good on providing affordable housing that the council majority let push from Phase One to Phase Two. Now the township has a multi-million dollar obligation for affordable housing that any redeveloper in Phase Two will be unlikely to take on because they get no benefit. That benefit went to investors in Phase One, and let Prism wiggle wiggle out of its obligation on Phase Two. Once again, we didn't hear the mayor talk about that tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Meg Valdez. Meg, please state your name and address for the record.
Um, it's Mel Julie, not Meg, but okay. Um, Mel Julie Valdez from um Elm Street. Um, hi, good evening, Township Council and the mayor. Um, I have a list of questions here for you regarding um this development and um just other things that have um been raised, have um, other residents have raised to me. Um, so I I would just like to know, how was this developer chosen? Um, Mayor Parisi stated that Mr. Weinman introduced him to Whippy Goldberg and then that connection was made with the MBS group. Um, what if other, what other developers were chosen? Why just only this potential uh developer um was engaged? Um, additionally, I would like to know, um, what is going to be the total cost of this project? Um, you know, this project does seem like perhaps, you know, it it could generate, um, it 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 could be a positive thing, but also how much is this actually gonna cost us as residents who have seen uh an increase year after year of our property taxes with not much to show for it? Um, what other concessions are being made? Additionally, why is it that this litigation um hasn't been made public? It's it's been in Superior Court. If I wanted to, I can um order the tapes right now to listen to, you know, eight hours a day of whatever was going on before Judge Moore, of arguments, legal arguments. Um, you know, why isn't this, you haven't presented really much um, much details until now, um, which I think is is pretty awful. Um, additionally, I would like to know why um you tout Phase One as such a, a great project when I have spoken to some residents of the Edison Lofts who have complained of mold and other issues with those apartments and have said that they will now be moving out once their lease is up, because they are not happy with the management there. And um they have called the Department of Health of West Orange, who has said that is not under their jurisdiction. Additionally, um, I would like to know why certain council members, and if they can please respond to this individually, why they do not support a township planner? I think that we really need to look into hiring a township planner who can um look at all the areas in town and really help us in further planning things. You know, we we, I know a lot of people are are concerned about, you know, we're not a Montclair, we're not a South Orange. And I think there is potential, but you know, I feel like there's been a a lot of mismanagement of of this administration. Um, so why hasn't a township planner been hired? Um, seems like some of the council pe- members are not um in favor of that. Um, also, you know, I want to talk about Prism. Um, this is not the first issue that we've had with Prism. It's been years upon years where Prism was actually negligent in paying property taxes. And part of one of the properties that they owned was foreclosed upon. So what I don't understand is the mayor talks about Prism being kind of great, but then, I guess, not so great because they decided to sue and this was in litigation. And now we have to pay them, it's it's, I guess, twenty million dollars. If if that's not correct, please, hopefully, it's less than twenty million dollars. But no, that that's a lot of money that we have to pay them. Um, and um also additionally, I would like to know, yes, when is the township uh building going to be open? I went there today in order to speak to the mayor, who has been um ignoring my emails um since February ninth. And um I was told that perhaps the building is gonna be opening as soon as next week. And I did see that there was some landscaping going on in. um since February ninth, and um I was told that perhaps the building is going to be opening as soon as next week, and I did see that there was some landscaping going on in the front. Um, so yeah, I would appreciate um, you know, some type of uh response regarding that, and also I would appreciate if the mayor could kindly professionally, in a timely manner, respond to my email request. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Vodas.
Thank you. All right, Rosary Morelli.
Try again. There she is.
I see her here. Ms. Morelli. She's muted.
Can you hear me?
Yes, yes.
Okay, something my computer just crashed. I'm sorry. Anyhow, Rosary Morelli, twenty-two Ralph Road. Um, what else do you want to know? That's it, right?
Your question or comment.
Okay, uh, I have two things I'd like to speak on. Number one, as far as our police force is concerned, it is one of the best around in the county, in the state, wherever. Um, seniors in the senior survey, where we had seven hundred and fifty responses, all and this is important, when seniors feel safe, the town is safe. They all responded. They feel safe to live in West Orange, and I fully support that myself. Um, the West Orange Women's Club, I actually, it was, well, I'm going to give you some history. It was began in West Orange in nineteen thirty-one. So there were two major things happened then. I was born and this West Orange Women's Club started up. Uh, I became a member in nineteen ninety-two and immediately was made the chair of the Scholarship Committee. And from that year until we I the uh organization dissolved, we awarded scholarships every year, and they started actually in nineteen thirty-one. When I came in in nineteen ninety-two, it was a lot of years later. Uh, when we dissolved, we had money in the uh Treasury. I think we gave, I'm not really sure of the numbers. I think we gave fifty thousand dollars to the West Orange Scholarship Committee that does an outstanding job, and we gave, I don't know, it was twenty thousand dollars to the library. It was a sad day because we're part of the history. The women worked very hard, but it just didn't work out because we couldn't get any young people to join, and we had to dissolve. But in the time that it was an active organization in the township, it did a lot of very good things. The scholarships were just one part of it. The interaction in the school system, going and read to the school kids, uh, so many more things. It's going to take me too long to talk about. I'm happy. I'm one of those people is extremely happy. They resurrected the organization, and I know based on the women that are on their board and the members, they will definitely succeed. They're real forward-thinking, and they are very proactive and hard workers. That's it.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Gary Van Wick. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hello, my name's Gary Van Wick, seventy-one Burnett Terrace. Um, regarding the development of the downtown area, we've had previous discussion about our community engaging in a charrette process in line with the recommendations of the American Institute.
Okay, Gary, sorry that you just got cut off there. If we can
Okay.
Try again.
Okay. Can you hear me now?
Oh, yes, but you got cut off in the mid-sentence. If you can start again.
Okay. About the development of the downtown area, previously, our community has discussed engaging in a charrette process, which is recommended by the American Institute of Architects for downtown design and development. So I'd like to know if we're going to engage in that process. I certainly hope so. And alternatively, or in addition, are we as a town going to have an independent professional town planning expertise engaged in the design process? Preferably, a town planner who's engaged on a limited contract as a consultant. Both of these approaches are to consider the interests of the community and the advice of experts along with the plans of the developers MBS. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great. Any other members of the public wish to speak? Yes, we have Todd. Please state your name and address for the record.
Uh, yes, hi, Todd Dubovy, Burnett Terrace. Um, uh, my biggest question has to do with uh really a lack of transparency relating to the development downtown. Um, we've heard nothing from anybody in 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 the administration about this until tonight, and um, if you haven't seen the presentation by the mayor, you have no idea uh what was uh presented, and yet you folks are going to vote for that this this evening. So we are given in essence an hour, if that, uh of advance notice um for what is a very important decision. Um, one of the questions I've got and has been already been asked before is the process in which MBS was selected as the redeveloper. We should be provided with details in writing from this administration as to what who was considered for the redeveloper. How was how were these developers? Uh, the list, the shortlist of developers determined and and identified, and then how how was the final selection made? Um, to basically verbally tell people this is what we're doing, and then you folks in the council sitting and voting on it tonight is unconscionable, frankly. Um, and is just an example of uh, you know, we're operating in a vacuum um and doing whatever it is you you'd like to without any input from from town residents. I agree with Gary Van Wick that there should be charrettes, there should be in resident involvement in these kinds of decisions, which isn't happening at all, and a charrette after the fact to work with the developer, a redeveloper. Yeah, I I that's actually too late. There should be, there's charrettes taking place now. So uh and leading up to this decision. Um, and frankly, related to that, I agree with other people's uh opinions who said Town Hall should be open. It it should be open. There's very few people who have called in to talk about this major decision that you guys are voting on. I guarantee you, if Town Hall was open, the council chambers would be jam-packed with people who would be uh speaking in opposition to what's going on here. So, you know, the there's there's obviously an agenda going on uh with with all of this, and um and that's pretty obvious over the years. Um, which is why the town is where it is today. Um, I put it to you that you should withdraw this vote for the for the uh redeveloper until people have had a chance to consider it and be able to ask intelligent questions um after having reviewed the situation. So those are those are my questions. I'd love to hear from each one of you on those matters. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dubovy. Meg?
Yes, we have James Jackson. Please state your name and address to the record.
Hi, yes, uh, James Jackson, um, one Ashley Road, West Orange, New Jersey. Um, I just wanted to take a moment, um, actually to say congratulations to the council on um the big studio deal tonight. I think uh as a president, I'm looking forward to the opportunity and the revenue that it brings to West Orange. Um, uh, mainly tonight, I didn't hear the discussion around um uh what was going to be decided uh around uh financing or or what the charge was for cannabis licensing. Um, but my main uh thing here tonight, and I don't want to take up too much time. I think members of the council have heard from you before, as well as people on the uh folks on the planning board. Um, I just uh really want to make a quick statement that um you know, I'm very proud that West Orange has moved forward with the cannabis ordinance um as a uh cannabis uh CEO and and owner of Yorcanna um here and 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 West Orange. Um, black-owned, operated, uh, and invested um operation ran by all West Orange residents. Um, we are are extremely excited to call West Orange our home and host community. Um, with that being said, um, there has been um a uh it's been a very difficult trek. Um, one, to even go through the process, but two, specifically, um, to be able to find um property and inventory in the industrial zones, which um per the ordinance, uh cultivation, manufacturing, and testing labs have been um, uh, I guess sanctioned to, or uh essentially, uh, that is the allowed um place that we would be able to host our businesses. Um, uh, with that being said, I've done a ton of work um in working with commercial agents um in in working and having conversations with business owners to that that may want to sell off market. Um, and there truly just is not opportunity to find inventory in 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 that industrial zone that fit for uh specifically a micro cultivation, micro uh, micro, micro manufacturing, or any type of obviously full-scale uh business that would be able to fit there. Um, you know, so I guess, you know, my ma- my main uh point is that it comes down to a ask, and I guess the ask for myself to the council would be to consider um opening up um other zones um and really looking at these applications as a case-by-case basis, including security, including smell remediation, including all the number of things that um a cultivator that is really on top of their game would be able to come with to prove to you all um that a building that could be retrofitted to however the town would like um with no signage, um with no uh view of what would be going on um is 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 perfectly safe in any neighborhood in West Orange. Um, and this is coming from somebody who has been in the cannabis industry from two thousand and ten, has successfully run cannabis businesses. Um, and um, you know, that's just, that's just kind of my stance and my ask. Um, I think it was great that West Orange passed the ordinance. Um, but with that being said, um, there has to be a true opportunity for business to actually find West Orange and be able to host their business here in West Orange since that ordinance did pass. Um, so that would be my ask. Take a look at at zones like R one, B one that have specifically, um, you know, right now, um, you know, have uh allowed and conditional uses for things that are very similar um to indoor cultivation, such as horticulture and agriculture buildings, as well as greenhouses that are permitted um accessory and conditional uses currently in R one and B one zones. Um, but yeah, that's 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 pretty much all I have here to say, and um I thank you for your time and as well as consideration in this matter.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson.
Any other members of the public wish to speak? Not seeing any council president.
Okay, then we can close public comment. Just one more glance. Do you want to take another look? Make sure. Okay. Well, I just want to start with a thank you to Joe Fagan for the information that he provided as Deputy Grand Marshal. Um, and Joe, I would ask that if you could create a slide for the information of PSDNG for our residents that we would all be able to share and post you know, about the programs to assist our residents, I I that would be appreciated. Uh, thank you for the reminder on the St. Patrick's Day. We look forward to stepping off in front of Town Hall at twelve fifteen on March thirteenth. Thank you. Um, this on the public comment with Mark Chase, um, there is an ordinance on tonight's uh rest on tonight's agenda about amendments being made to our steep slope ordinance. We have had a steep slope ordinance for many years. Um, and I really want to commend the administration and our legal team. I had made a request to add these amendments or our steep slope uh ordinance addressed digging into the grade of the uh of the slope. But what I wanted to add and recommend is any activity at the top of a cliff, and that's what is being introduced on first reading with this with this ordinance. Uh, those, uh, that's what we will discuss later when we talk about the the order ordinance. Our administration or business administrator can address the issue of Town Hall being open, and there is a cannabis task force. One of your questions was about the task force. Councilwoman Mathieu Brown is our liaison and chair of the advisory task force, so there's a resolution here about the application fees, and she can address your questions uh with that resolution. I thank Rosary for commending the police department and the work of the West Orange Women's Club because that endowment that they made to the West Orange Scholarship Fund thousand, one thousand dollars in scholarship is awarded every year to the students at the high school. So that work will continue. All of the questions on redevelopment, uh, Mr. Trink working on all of these, I think could be best to answer all of those questions. I know Mr. Krakoviac had the question about the remediation cost. We spent a day in court on Thursday, working out that um that agreement and the costs involved there. Uh, the comment that was made, Mr. Dubovy said, uh, that's why the town is where it is today. I allowed that public com- or I allowed the mayor to give that presentation, and he brought us up to speed at where the town is today, so we are excited. As you heard in all of our comments, that we are excited to be where we are right now, and with some of the other quite a bit of development that's going on with Essex Green, the proposed development that will be at the K-Mot Vaccination Center, the Executive Drive Project, and the uh the library. Um, senior housing at our current library. There are plenty of things. Uh, the comment um even from Mr. Van Whip about the charrette. We need to get through all of these resolutions and agreements, uh, and that's when public, all of the public can be involved in that planning process. I wrote down some, not all of Joe Kukoviac's comments, um, and I will have the uh our attorney, Richard Trank, address that. And uh to Mr. Jackson, thank you for being so interested in investing in our town. I will again uh defer to Councilwoman Mathieu Brown as the Chair of the Advisory Commission, the Task Force. Uh, I'm sorry, the Advisory Task Force Cannabis, uh, because I believe that that discussion about the zones and and reconsideration of the zone is yet to be had. Ms. Trink, would you care to comment on quite a few of the questions that were raised about the litigation and again, we talked about, there was something about a failure in the sale agreement and the pilot, and what I did hear the mayor say. Oh, I have to find it. The projected revenue that we are seeing that we did not even anticipate, so.
Again, I guess council president, um, maybe the other council um persons want to speak first, and then I can do the wrap-up on
Sum it up, okay.
Yeah, on on Mr. Krakoviac's citation of my letters, which I always appreciate.
Uh, Councilwoman Catalina, would you like to start? We'll go in alphabetical order this time.
Sure. Thank you, Council President. Uh, let me start with what you just finished up with. I look forward to Mr. Trank answering a lot of the questions. Like, you know, I understand the angst of the community. Um, mayor came on tonight, but this isn't the first that's been heard of. Words Film Studio, we uh approved an overlay months ago. Um, there's been amendments, um, a lot of chatter on Facebook. I I have been on there that often, so to 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 come on and say this is the first that anyone has heard of a film studio coming in is a little disingenuous. Um, but you know what? Like always with the other larger projects that we that have been presented to the township, um, the mayor came on, he gave you details, he was caught up to speed. You know, when they go to court, again, uh, my former colleague, you know, the rules, you know, the negotiations, they're not discussed in public until you Again, my former colleague, you know, the rules, you know, the negotiations, they're not discussed in public until you can discuss them. Tonight's the night when they're able to be discussed. So as the mayor said, some of you may not have caught the beginning of the mayor's presentation. But this is just beginning the resolution. Again, these resolutions approved and then moving forward with a more thoughtful laid out plan. And, and that will, and that will be, will be presented to us once again with plenty of community input like we did with the other larger projects in the town. So we're a little excited. You know, are we concerned? Of course we're concerned. Are we asking questions and doing our due diligence? Of course we are. But tonight's not the night to have those kind of conversations. It was just to give all of you a brief overview. And we look forward to continual conversations. But Mr. Trank could answer a lot of those questions. I think also Mr. Gross could answer some of the, the financials as, as well and go over, over that. You know, when you buy real estate, there's due diligence with environmentals. Township is no different as again, you know, discussions were had. We had approved all of our professionals who went out and did that due diligence. So these were conversations that have been had the, the past year. So with that, I'm gonna go a little backwards on a couple of comments. So, Mr. Jackson, thank you for looking to invest in our community. And I'm a member of the task force. And, you know, we did the I-zone and we're understanding where the limitations are. I'm not one to jump in right away to change the zoning. I like the fact that the task force could review it and it could go to zoning and the case by case basis, as you just stated. Makes me feel a little bit more comfortable. I'm still at ease with, with a lot of the process with, with this. But understanding it and finding it very educational as, as we move forward with our cannabis ordinance. And I want to thank my colleague, Councilwoman Mathieu Brown, because just the hour she spends on all of this and educating me a lot on a lot of my questions. It's, it's been, it's been a real learning curve. And so I thank her for that. And she could articulate much better than I in a few minutes when it's her turn to speak. Now, I look forward to the steep slope ordinance. It is on first reading tonight. So look forward to that. And let's see here, Rosary Morelli. So glad you're able to come on the call tonight and thank you for all of your service with the Women's Club. As I mentioned that story before, I still remember when all of you came to that school board meeting to present that check for the West Orange Scholarship Fund and all the work that all the ladies have done through the years. And being Women's Month, you know, it is, is exciting. You know, the Joe Fagan mentioned first women in sports. It's always so great to see our, our ladies, our women's sports teams blossom through the past god, five, five, six years at the high school. Just the programs expanding and just the tremendous athletes that we have at West Orange High School. So we'd like to recognize that this month. Also, I'd like to recognize, Mr. Fagan mentioned the St. Patrick's Day Parade kickoff on March 13th. And again, our grand marshal is a woman, Melan Dangler. And, you know, she's the longest running grand marshal, three years running since it was announced three years ago, because we had two cancellations for the parade. And, you know, I, I want to thank Melan. She is such an inspiration. Some of you may see her time to time and shop right wearing the sash throughout the past couple of years. And it just keeping the pride of the parade, just keeping the energy when so many were deflated, when we couldn't have the parade again. And I, I find it very appropriate that this year it is on March 13th, because it was two years ago, which is our, actually our township's anniversary when COVID really officially hit us with our first coronavirus task force meeting that we had in the school board office when we had a look forward and saw how we may be closing school. And little did we imagine then, how long we would have closed school for, for our students and, and, and what our community has been through. And so it's, I think it's going to be a great inspiration for all of us to march down Main Street on, on March 13th and, you know, just have that excitement back and that feeling of normalcy here in the township. So a special shout out to Melan Dangler and for all that her family does with Dangler Funeral Poller. They've donated so much to our community and they're just another great business and really wonderful grand marshal this year. So congratulations to her. Also with news on, on the women's front as well, today our new interim superintendent started. As we all know, our, our superintendent will be leaving on March 14th. Dr. Cascone, as we say goodbye to him, we welcome Dr. C. Lauren Shown. The, our school board had hired her and she starts today. So we wish her a lot of luck. And I think I covered everything and I look forward to Mr. Trank and Mr. Gross speaking whenever my colleagues are finished with their comments. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Mathieu Brown.
Thank you, Council President, for the opportunity to respond. So I checked off the things that you went over, so I'm going to skip those. But, Mr. Fagan, as always, thank you for the bit of information that you bring to us. Certainly helps me put it in my calendar quicker than having to look for it. Mr. Chase, you mentioned the steep slope. What has been done, I will tell you that on October 24th, 2021, I did email the administration asking them to understand what, what logistics we had to undertake to be proactive and not reactive in, in avoiding the situation that occurred on Northfield Avenue to those residents. Since that time, what has happened is the mayor has reached out for assistance from the state. As far as I know, unfortunately, we have not heard anything back. That is, you know, the, the request for assistance is the result of what we were looking to do was a study on all of our steep slopes, geotechnical studies. And this is something that, you know, we ourselves cannot independently do, both from a logistics perspective, but also financial. So we did reach out to the state for some assistance and I'm sure we will continue to do that. But since that time, we have, the council has approved moving forward with an expert to help us amend our steep slope ordinance, which we will discuss during the ordinance period. But I am happy to just highlight some of the things that are in that ordinance to include the requirement of geotechnical studies and reports. And there's requirements surrounding that as well for anyone who is looking to develop. The setback has been changed as well. So there's a lot of solid information in there that I look forward to discussing with our council colleagues. All the development going on, any consideration for lowering taxes. I think everyone on, on the screen that lives in West Orange and everyone who is listening to us and everyone who is not, would like to lower taxes. What this will do is help balance the obligations that the municipality has. Because our, our municipality really operates on a true string. 27% of your tax dollars is what the municipality uses overall. The lion's share goes to our public education system. I no longer have children in the system, but I am happy to continue to support the public education system because it helps maintain the value of our homes. But also it is a wonderful educational institution that prepares our future leaders to help take care of us tomorrow. So we look forward to being able to generate revenue from this project. Unfortunately, we don't have those details yet, but that is the intent. Just the way we look forward to generating revenue with respect to the cannabis industry in the next couple of years to come. So fingers crossed, we're working very hard to make sure that we reach an agreement that is profitable for the municipality and provide some relief to the residents. I do want to understand, I want everyone to understand that when we're talking about taxes also, there are certain state obligations that we have to pay that increase annually, that there's no way around, right? So when we're talking about our public employee pensions, that, that's something that's not controllable. We have certain obligations to the county. That is not, you know, something we can forego or the board of ed. So I do still say, and Mr. Gross will probably agree with me, that our first budget hearing when I was elected was a 13-hour saga of trying to understand where to cut and what to cut. And we did get through a lot of cuts and it did not even impact a half percentage point to be able to say, well, we don't, we don't, we can't, we can't increase the way we, we, no, we had to increase unfortunately, because we couldn't find a way to cut any more than we already did. And that's really when I first started digging into how our municipality spends our tax dollars and found that there are certain obligations that, you know, we have that we just cannot ignore. When is town hall open? More people may attend. And I'm just lumping that in with your question, Mr. Chase, because I've heard it repeated a couple of times. I will say that, again, I am new on the council, three years young. But today we were at 41 people, residents that were in attendance. In town hall, we don't have that unless there is a huge contract. I think the last time that we, the, the house was packed at town hall was during the police contract negotiations, where we had, you know, the state PBA come out and all of the supporting PBAs. But I quite frankly feel that this medium allows for the participation of so many more people. Right now we have 32 still remaining on. So while I did not answer your question as to when, because I don't know, I will tell you that we are far more accessible this way than we are in town hall. Now, we do miss being in town hall because there's a camaraderie and a different dynamic that happens, you know, when we're discussing this in person. So look forward to be back at some time, but I don't know when that is. We do have the cannabis regulation fee on the agenda, which we will be discussing. I am going to ask Council President just to pull it so that we can have a discussion. To pull it from the council, the dissent agenda so that we can have a discussion about it. So when that ordinance, when that resolution comes up, we will take a deep dive into that. Because I'm sure that my council colleagues also have questions. Changing the zoning. So this is some, a discussion that the task force has not had yet. You know, we, we, we are moving along as diligently as we can in a space that really is an unknown space. I started talking about the cannabis industry when the Jake Holnick legislation first passed. Or right before it passed, I had a town hall on cannabis three years ago, just to start educating ourselves. Because I knew someday this would come before us and we'd have to vote for it. And I'd like to know what we're voting for. So it's still very brand new. We're still working through the processes. But at this time, there is no change in zoning. That is before the council. I am going to, I'll get back to Mr. Korvijak and Ms. Valdez. Gary, thanks for joining us tonight. I will say that that is something that I have had a discussion with the mayor about when I brought up the charrette for Rock Spring. And because he was working on this project, you know, and we don't have anything that is an actual plan or there is no movement, let me say movement, on Rock Spring development. He said, let's, let's hold off on that and let's focus on the downtown redevelopment first. So I do look forward to having the charrettes to include the people. I don't agree with Mr. Todd Dubovny that says it's too late. It's not too late. We do not have a redevelopment agreement at this time. This is the beginning of having those conversations, because we couldn't have those conversations without having ownership of the land. And if this redeveloper doesn't work out, then we will have a different discussion. But at the end of the day, it is a process of moving us forward. You also asked, are we engaging in that project an independent professional planner? I'm going to ask everyone who is still listening to please do a Google search for MBS Group. They are global and you can see the projects that they have developed and those that they operate looks like, you know, cities within cities. So I would be comfortable if that professional was part of their team, which I'm sure they will bring. But certainly think that we will have to work with, with an external independent planner if MBS goes off. I, Ms. Councilwoman Williams, I think you're, you're unmuted. Councilwoman? Oh, you are, okay. Thank you. So do look forward to that. Let's see. Mr. Dubovny, you also mentioned the transparency, not having heard anything about the process until now. You know, I believe that you shared at one point that you were in development or real estate. Litigation matters aren't something that are discussed publicly, despite the fact that our former council colleagues likes to, to incite the public by using words like secrets from the public. It's not a secret from the public. You just don't discuss litigation matters in the public until they're settled. This was just settled. This is why it came to the public immediately when it was settled. So it's not about a lack of transparency, but it's a process, which I'm sure you understand, having had the experience of many years being in the industry of development and redevelopment. And I think James, I'm sorry. Oh, Mr. Jackson, I just wrote James J. I so apologize, Mr. Jackson. Thank you for your support in our decisions to help move the township forward. I am in agreement with you as respect to the limitations on inventory in the industry zone. I certainly hope to, at some point, be able to find some compromise somewhere where we can, particularly when they're micro businesses, because when we're looking at the law of, the cannabis regulations, we want to first and foremost support members of color. Those who have been marginalized and have had consequences as a result of the criminalization of cannabis and the war on, on the failed war on drugs. So I hope to be able to have those discussions with my task force first and then the administration and the council. But those have not been had at this time. We will be discussing the, the, the pricing for applications and licensing a little later. Mr. Krakowak, I did stop writing. I'm going to be very honest with you. I stopped writing at some point. When you made reference about the members of the council allowing the mayor just to, you know, dictate blindly accept conditions of the land. I don't know if you were on when the mayor was on and he gave his presentation. I thought it was a very thorough presentation with respect to what happened in the course from, I think he said September to Monday, when it was released, when, when the settlement agreement was, was finalized, when they dismissed the complaints against the township and everyone else states sought litigation against, and when the wire transfers were done. To have those conversations, you know, before settling any of this is not a matter of secret, but a matter of process. As you all know, you were a 10-year, 10-year council member and you sat on many executive sessions. and you sat on many executive sessions and understood that those were closed sessions for a reason. So there's no secret. We just were not prepared to talk about it because we were still in litigation. You spoke to the fact that there, we're neglecting the liability that we are incurring in undertaking this project. I, I take exception to that because that's quite frankly, an insult to every one of my council colleagues and the administration here. We consider everything. We too live here. It's a matter of public record, 24 Corwell, that's where I live. I pay taxes like everyone else. There is not a moment of a decision that is taken that is not considered with liability, which is why when we had faith and the courage to take this step to default PRISM, I don't care how many years, you know, you neglect to say the years of litigation, you neglect to say that they in fact, we in fact went from the $100 million investment that only PRISM wanted to undertake to now receiving payments in 2020 that are over $1.2 million. So no, we did not lose. I think we're doing quite well. I understand your position when it comes to this administration. And I don't, I, I don't want to be offensive when I say the following, but I'm doing it because I was on the other side of where everyone else is right now on this screen. I was sitting on the, on the other side of the dais, listening largely to the things that you would speak about. And not having all of the information really, really took me astray in understanding how a municipality functions. I understand that your purpose in service was to serve the community. However, I, I think you do a disservice to the public by telling just what you perceive to be negative, which is not necessarily the truth. You know, I did not support ending a contract with PRISM just because they were delinquent in their taxes. You know, when we're delinquent in our taxes, we pay an interest. I'm happy to take that interest from PRISM. So I was not too concerned about that. But it really isn't fair for you to sit there as much work as we've all done to say that we are not considering the liability. Absolutely consider the liability. That's why we understood that if this did not work out, we will go out to bid for a redeveloper and come up with a new plan. But at the end of the day, the, the entity that you so rallied against for so many years, we got rid of. So I'm happy with the decision that my colleagues undertook. And again, it's not meant as offensive, but I just don't think that you do any service, except for self-service in the event that this is all political, if you're intending to run again. Ms. Valdez, how was this developer chosen? So the, the mayor did explain the process of the introduction. It's before the council now. And by law, we are able to select a redeveloper if there is an area designated as an area in need of redevelopment, which this was done in 2006. So because there's so much interest in the film industry, because there's such a great demand in the film industry, there is great competition. I promise that all of our neighbors that we look to, to say, why can't we be Montclair or Milburn or Maplewood? They're all saying, how did you guys do that? Why can't we get a movie studio? So it was an opportunity, a discussion was had and the mayor explained how that discussion happened. And right now the resolution is for a conditional redeveloper because we only have 180 days, according to the resolution, to come to some sort of agreement that is feasible to West Orange and MBS. I did also note that you questioned the total cost of this project. Those conversations have not been had yet, so I can't answer, none of us can answer that question. But the redeveloper, again, please Google MBS Group, see what their work looks like. And I am sure that you can probably answer some of your own questions. With respect to your statement that the taxes have increased year after year, they have not. The last two budgets that were passed were zero. You're absolutely correct that in, when I came into office, unfortunately, and I learned this only after getting on the, on the dais. And if you are intending to run, I suggest that you also look at the budget and understand what a surplus is and how we are able to use that surplus and for a couple of years, and then by state statute, we can no longer use it. When I came in as an elected official three years ago, that was the year we couldn't know, we could no longer use the surplus. So we increased taxes because like I stated earlier, there are obligations to the state that increase. And unfortunately, you know, we have contractual obligations with all of our staff that increase. So the, the surplus can only hold us off for so long, but we have not increased taxes year after year. The last two years were a zero. Why not made public? You can order the tapes at any time. Again, this all just happened. It's not like we can sit in a courtroom with a judge who is trying to mediate because that's what he was doing. It wasn't a trial, it was a mediation. He was trying to avoid us going through the extensive expense of a trial and the extensive years and lengthy trials. So he was mediating. Sometimes he was on the record, sometimes he was not. But yes, you're absolutely right. What's public record you can Oprah? Let's see what else. Haven't presented much until now. We already discussed that. Why certain council members don't support a town planner? I do, so I don't need to talk about that. A lot of mismanagement by this administration. I thought the same as you, which is why I ran. I find things quite differently, having been hands-on and having learned what governance is and how to work within those structures to help us move forward. When is the township Town Hall open? We already discussed that. And with respect to the mayor responding to your email, I know you emailed us, but I quite frankly, that's the mayor's prerogative. You know, that's not got anything to do with the council. We can't make him hire anyone, just like we can't make him answer anyone's email. He is the mayor. Unfortunately, I, I can't answer that for you. I think I've spoken far too long and taken some personal privilege, Council President, but thank you for the time.
Thank you for your stance and really thank you for sharing your copious notes and your expertise of a year of sitting through the courtroom and, and, and the ordeal that, that we have been through. Thank you. Councilman Rutherford.
Thank you, Council President. Mr. Fagan, thank you again for your timely information. Mr. Chase, I am going to reserve my comments on the steep slope ordinance until we get to that part of the agenda, specifically with regard to your question about how to lower property taxes. While it is difficult, it is not impossible and it begins by stopping residential development. We can't eliminate it completely. Obviously, we have an affordable housing requirement, some of which is leftover from Phase One in PRISM downtown. So we certainly have to build some affordable housing. But if we want to maintain the line, it is not just about the expenses. It's also about the revenue. And commercial property taxpayers use less in services than residential property taxpayers because they don't put people in schools. So that's where our focus needs to be. And that's exactly what our mayor talked about tonight. Downtown has a focus right now with a major opportunity for development that can be significantly beneficial to our finances. But there needs to be more. So, so that's where we begin and that's the easiest thing that we can do. There's plenty of others. They get a little bit harder and it's a lot more nuanced. So I just want to focus on that. Folks have already talked about when Town Hall will be open. Also talked about the fees in the, in the zones. I have not seen anything, at least in my email with regard to new zones, but I do understand there is some talk about that. And I'm happy to entertain that conversation because I am supportive of recreational adult-use cannabis in town. I think it's going to be a significant source again of revenue for the town, which helps us offset some of the expenses that we have to pay. Ms. Morelli, again, I thank you for your, your comments. I want to echo your sentiments on our police. Thank you, Chief Abbott. I don't know if he's still here. Yes, he is. Thank you, Chief, for your presentation earlier. You know, our police have done a great job. And this is a unique opportunity, you know, West Orange has. We don't have some of the same problems that other towns have. We do have a minor, some minor issues with regard to crime. It's only minor if it's not you. If it is you, it's not a minor issue. I understand that. But because crime has come down so much, when we do see these one-offs here or there, they get highlighted, doesn't mean we can't do better. But I do think our police certainly should be applauded. And Chief, after managing the police force for 25 years, certainly deserves to be applauded as well. Mr. Kukorviak and Ms. Valdez, while I will reserve answering those questions that you posed with regard to the downtown development, I, I do want to say I, I thank you for asking those questions. This is how we are held accountable. There's nothing wrong with asking a difficult question. A few weeks ago, I attended a rally led by Zvonfrieder Mura and she and others from various green groups around town made a very uncomfortable presentation. But that's what we are supposed to go through. It is part of the way we learn how people feel and it is a way that they feel that their voices, or at least can see if their voices are being heard. So I applaud you for, for trying to hold us accountable. I don't think politics needs to be in here in that regard, with regard to campaigns. So we shouldn't even mention it, whether that's the intention or not. But thank you, Ms. Valdez. Thank you, Mr. Kukorviak, for those questions. Mr. Van Wick, I certainly do support both of your suggestions this evening with regard to the Charette process and the town planner. And then to Mr. Dubovy, Dubovy. I don't believe it is too late. I am excited about hearing from the entire community on how we can make this project better. Certainly, we have to wait until it is appropriate to speak about these things. And to your point, Mr. Dubovy, I, I know you'd like the, you'd like us to withdraw the vote for the interim or, or redeveloper until the residents decide what to do. But that unfortunately for your perspective is not how this works. We elect folks to represent us in those rooms and make those decisions in the best interest of West Orange and on behalf of residents. But what I would like to say is, if you find that your elected representatives are not representing your best interest, if you think that we campaign on one thing and govern in a different way, if we make promises and don't keep them, then you have every right, number one, to hold us accountable, certainly through public comment. But number two, hold us accountable when, when elections come around. Mr. Jackson, I have not heard of your business prior to now, but I'm excited to learn that there is a cannabis business, or at least at least a group in town that has a cannabis business. I don't know where it's located, but certainly I'm looking forward to hearing more and I certainly do wish you much success. I think, I think that's it for me.
Thank you.
One last thing on the, with regard to Mr. Chase. You know, the other thing that we need to do is stop giving, we, we need to vigorously fight against some of these tax appeals. I know Mr. Trink does a yeoman's job in representing the town. But one of the decisions that he and I disagree on is with regard to Essex Green. If we're more diligent about those kinds of projects and vigorously fight those, I think we have an opportunity to save the town some money. We gave Essex Green a tax reduction of some sort. Obviously, they were filing an appeal. But I find that really difficult to accept, given they purchased the property for 97 million. Every single year, property values went up since they owned it and they're making an investment in the property now. We certainly want to be pro-business. That's how we help offset the burden on residential property taxpayers. But there has to be a balance and that's one of those situations that I disagreed with Mr. Trink on. Thank you, Council President. That concludes my comments.
Thank you, Councilman Rutherford and Councilwoman Williams. Next time we'll go in reverse order, okay?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I was getting ready. Look, look, you already know. You already know. I'm about to say I have the unpleasant opportunity of going last. So unfortunately, some of my comments are going to be the reiteration of commentary that has already been given by my council colleagues, whom I love. But with that being said, my last name is Williams. You know, my first last name was Blackwell. I was like, I would be, I would be. But you know, that was my first husband and that's no longer the situation. And I went back to who I really am. So Tammy Williams, end of the alphabet, and so it is. So, Mr. Fagan, thank you always for coming to us and bringing us West Orange information. We appreciate you. We're looking forward to the St. Patrick's Day Parade, just the camaraderie and the experience that that brings to West Orange. We've been two years in this COVID pandemic and of course, with the cancellation of the St. Patrick's Day Parade. I had the pleasure of participating in that parade as the Chairwoman of the Human Relations Commission since 2016. And I am absolutely looking forward to participating again as an elected official. So my HRC council colleagues, they had their meeting on Monday. They're going to participate as well. So in that regard, life is good. Today is March 1st, 2022, the beginning of Women's History Month, the ending and the culmination of Black History Month. So for me, life is good. I, I, I get to evolve into both of those roles. So as Black History Month, of course, being the first black councilwoman elected in the township of West Orange, I had the honor and the privilege of, of, of being given some type of accolade. As Women's History Month, I want to acknowledge my council colleagues. I want to say Susan McCartney, the first female councilwoman in the township of West Orange. Michelle Catalino, Councilwoman West Orange. Cindy Matute Brown, first Latinx Councilwoman of West Orange. And then let's bring it on home, myself. First black African-American Councilwoman of West Orange. Thank you. I think we all can give a tremendous amount of gratitude and pleasure to those who elect leadership in West Orange. And on behalf of all my council colleagues, I just want to say thank you for trusting us, each of us, to serve as your elected officials, to trust us to govern the township of West Orange and take us to the next level. So with that being said, again, just thank you, West Orange, for your trust and confidence. And again, you have elected us to lead and govern and to determine what is best for the township of West Orange. And we all know behind every good man is a good woman. And so there we go. Mr. Fagan, thank you again for always as the public and Mr. Fagan, thank you again for always, as the Public Information Officer, for giving us information, for the Township Historian, for giving us a historical perspective. And in his absence, Mr. Puglisi is unable to be with us this evening and give us county comments because he is at the fundraiser for our elected official and, and County Representative, Mr. Joe DiVincenzo. So again, just thank you. Mr. Mark Chase, again, we'll get to the steep scopes when we get to that ordinance. As far as lowering property taxes are concerned, we're doing everything that we can to, to, to get us to that level. Cannabis usage in West Orange, redevelopment in West Orange, that is all in the pursuit of lowering taxes. Opening Town Hall, that will be identified and determined by the administration when it is best safe to do so. Let me remind you that West Orange was one of those municipalities in Essex Counties that had one of the highest death rates as well as infection rates for COVID. And while we are two years into this pandemic, we are still only at a diminishing rate of hospitalizations and infection rates for, for COVID. So when it is, we are just now entering conversations of mask requirements for, for the entire state with the governor. We are the third largest municipality in Essex County. Please, while it is all of us and each of our desires to get back to a sense of normalcy, it is also our desire to get back to that with care and consideration. Let me remind you that West Orange is the home of 11 senior facilities. And therefore, we interact often with the elderly, whether it be in a facility, whether it be in our own homes or extended community. We have to have safety as a priority. So we want to get back to what we thought was a normal society pre-COVID. But we have to do that with care and consideration. So I applaud this administration for what they have done to continue to protect the residents of West Orange. Cannabis regulations and fees, as the Liaison for the Economic Development Commission, I welcome and invite the public to participate in our upcoming cannabis meeting on Monday, March 7th. Our own former council president and cannabis task force liaison, Cindy Matute Brown, will be presenting. She will go through the application process and what is required for application in West Orange. So I appreciate you wanting to put that to the forefront. While the council meeting may not have been the appropriate time, this is why we have commissions. We have commissions so that if there is something that we cannot deal with in council meeting, there are appropriate venues and/or settings for those issues to be addressed. So I invite the entire West Orange community and beyond to please participate on March 7th. Information will be posted on the municipal website, westorange.org for the upcoming meeting, March 7th, Monday, 6:00 PM, so that you can understand the process. And Task Force Chairwoman Matute Brown will be more than happy to go through that step by step and respond to any questions that anyone may have. Again, westorange.org. Mr. Krokowiac, I have to say to you, and I, and unfortunately, it is with a little bit of frustration as well as discontent. You have served in the capacity, I've been this, this for one year. But I did my due diligence prior to running for election. I participated in West Orange government in, in an appointed capacity. And therefore, it is disheartening for me to hear you almost grandstand in a public forum and arena when you know how this operation works. You understand government. You understand the process and procedure. But I have to step back and say, I, I am appalled at your disingenuousness when you come to the public in this forum and indicate that you are appalled at how we process information. You know too well. Councilwoman Matute Brown has identified already the information that you know, the process that is very clear and transparent. And for you to put us in, in, in a position where we are almost suspect, it's just, it's not fair. You did this. You served in this capacity as an elected official. You understand clearly what our process and procedure is. You know, when there is litigation, it is confidential. You know that when the administration has the capacity to bring things forward and to the forefront, it is done. And yes, unfortunately, it sometimes happens even minutes and hours before a town council meeting. And we, as elected officials, we complain because this is a part-time salaried position. However, we are full-time elected officials. When I go into ShopRite, it's not Tammy Real Estate Agent. It's not Tammy, mother of the teenagers who have graduated from West Orange High School. It's not Mother Tammy Williams, who has raised her family here in West Orange. It is Councilwoman Tammy Williams, what are you doing? Why is this happening? So whether our salary is commensurate of the responsibility that we have to the township of West Orange, again, I am putting out and on record, for the time that I have served as an elected official, I have been somewhat taken aback by your inference that what we are doing is impropriate, improper, and/or inappropriate. You served in my very shoes for many, many years. You know there is information that an elected official is privileged to before it hits the general public. You understand the assignment. And for you to imply that any of the five people who sit here behind this table, whether it is a virtual table or the table that you can come in front of and sit with us, is highly unfortunate for you to have that position to me. And that is all I want to say to your comments. Ms. Valdez, as far as the information that you have been, been provided and some of the comments and statements that you have made, again, in concert with my council colleagues, I would just ask that you verify your information. We are always available. Email, cell phone, please, before you come into this forum and make accusations to the public that are just simply untrue, feel free to reach out to all of us. Again, we are 24-hour elected officials, irregardless of what the paycheck says. Mr. Dubovy, I understand that you have been here and that you are in my industry. Please, do your due diligence, be respectful, and don't put us in positions that are compromising that you personally wouldn't even be willing to, to sit in. We do this because we love West Orange. Ms. Morelli, thank you so much for your Women's Club comments, for your, for your commitment, for your service to the West Orange community. I have been enlightened by some of your acknowledgements through the ti- through the times. You bring a completely different perspective regarding seniors, regarding a lifelong resident that we should listen to. So I always thank you for your comments. Mr. Jackson, cannabis, the film industry, game changers for West Orange. West Orange, while we have perhaps not been in the forefront, for whatever reason, anyone may think, the time is now. We have positioned West Orange to be transformational. This council, this mayor, did that, are doing that. And so while I understand social media is not always friendly to everything that they don't understand about government, you elected us. You elected us to serve in your best interests and you elected us to serve for what's best for West Orange. Each and every one of these elected officials, officials is a homeowner, is a resident. We pay taxes. So our interest is no different from any other resident. We want what is best to produce the best experience for our families without giving a tremendous amount to the township because that is what is going to make any community successful. And so again, I, I just, I thank all of you all. Every resident who takes time to listen to our town council meetings, whether it be at the recorded sessions, whether it be at the live sessions, and even if you have taken the time to come and participate while it is actually going on. We thank you. We need to understand your opinions. We need to understand your desires and we need to understand what is going to be best for you and your family. So thank you, thank you, thank you. Council President, that's all I have.
Thank you, Councilwoman Williams. I just so appreciate your enthusiasm, but you know me well enough by now that I am a stickler for details. Then when you were talking about Women's History Month, I may be the longest-running woman serving on the town council and elected official, but I'm not the first.
You're not the first!
I'm not the first. So I really take pride in the fact that West Orange is so forward-thinking because two came before me, Toby Katz and Cindy Nakle.
You're, Toby Katz, I totally forgot. I totally forgot. I totally forgot.
But I think I do hold the record for the longest-running female. So we do have Mr. Trink that was going to offer a few more details on this conditional redeveloper.
Yes, thank you. And foremost, exactly what was said by several of your colleagues and you, the approval tonight of the resolution with the agreement does not bind the town, just like it does not bind the proposed redeveloper to anything other than to negotiate in good faith. That is what is required. And I will tell you, the strongest precedent for it that has been instrumental is exactly what we did with Joe Albert on Central Avenue. Exactly what, one of the few projects that Mr. Krokowiac voted in favor of. That redeveloper, we started out from a premise of, we need to get in the room and negotiate. And the only way you can get especially a reputable counterparty to do that with the resources, with the number of communities who are seeking an entity of the substance of MBS, is if they say, hey, we're going to negotiate in good faith, one-on-one, to come to a deal. And that's exactly what we're going to do for, you know, the six, next six months, hopefully quicker. But certainly, these are complicated financial transactions that involve tens of millions of dollars on the ground in this corridor and which, as several of your colleagues said, will have a hu- huge impact, not just on our community, but on the entire region. So again, we are not, there, there will never, and never has been a, a time when any part of the fisc of this town will be pledged or whatnot without going before this governing body, as we've done in the past. So, so conditional redeveloper means exactly that. It basically means we're going to negotiate with one party at a time, especially a party of the size and significance and experience and resources of, of, of MBS. As, as certainly the administration has learned, and I think most of our co- our colleagues in the council, that the, the more substantial the counterparty, the more likely that, yes, they're sophisticated. That's why we have Michael Hanley, that's why we have John Gross, that's why, you know, you have auditors involved. But the bottom line is, they're, they're playing with their own money. So you're going to have a party that's ready, willing, and able. And if an agreement is reached, is going to be able to implement it. So that's what this vote is for tonight, nothing else. But it's a huge step and a necessary step, or else we'll never get out of the, you know, get, get into the game. So now, Mr. Krokowiac decided to read some of my letters. Of course, as in every case, Mr. Krokowiac, like everybody else, has my cell phone number and I've told him on a numerous occasions. And, and certainly Mr. Krokowiac knows about what litigation is because in fact, when he was on the council, he sued the township for a videotape that the minute that I learned about it, we got him the tape. We obviously had to pay his legal fees under Oprah. But if he had picked up the cell, his cell phone called me and said, hey, I need this, this is important, we would have resolved it. So, Mr. Krokowiac, we were very conscious during that litigation not to talk about that in public. Just as Councilwoman Matute Brown said, we not talked about this litigation in public, although it's been fully public. It's been very public since last summer. It's been in every media outlet because of the nature of the people that were sued, including the township. And we've hired a, we, we had a substantial team that was involved in, in, in addressing that litigation. And we're the ones who in the end provoked it, basically, someone would say. Because the decision was made that was time to move to another developer and, and to move to a different vision and, and to have the opportunities that are before the council tonight and hopefully will come to fruition over the next few months. As to the, the selective reading of certain correspondence I, I sent, which is on the public docket and available for anyone to read. That correspondence was directly correct, as was referenced, that was February 1st. And we did get test results. That's part of why we didn't close by the end of last year. We said we had to have access, we had to get samples, we had to get results. And we had to have Matrix, an independent consultant, estimate what the potential cost would be to address the environmental issues. So while that hasn't been implemented yet, because physically it's not, because we're dealing with the Department of Environmental Protection, which is a, a substantial, obviously bureaucracy, we accomplished two things, as the mayor alluded to. One, we created what's called RFS, remediation funding source. This is a, a vehicle that's set under the DEP guidelines of $951,000 that was held back from the closing proceeds of the 12.5 million and is with the Lulens Law Firm. So it's with a, an attorney trust account and that 951,000 after the additional testing is done, which will be, which is part of what we're scheduling beginning tomorrow, will, will come in division as to what that is. And on top of that, what we negotiated, again, thank you, Council President McCartney and Councilwoman Matute Brown. What we negotiated, and as was said by Councilwoman Matute Brown, Presiding Judge Moore continued to push the sides to keep our eye on the prize of getting this done, is an additional 500,000, which is held by another law firm, the Sills Commiss Law Firm in Newark, which will be available to deal with any contaminated soil that was left on 55 Wake Side. So what's supposed to happen now that we've closed is that Prism still is obligated to remove any contaminated soil that might be on that, on 55 Wake Side. It's been estimated that it will cost no more than the 500,000. Matrix provided that estimate, which we had to wait for, which is why, again, the closing was postponed for two months so that we could get empirical data and not, and, and, and have a basis. And so, again, so between the 951 and the 500,000, we're talking about close to 1,451,000 approximately. That's in escrow, that came off of the 12.5 million and which will help safeguard us in implementing it. So yes, it's nice to read. I, I appreciate reading my letters and certainly. Um, I, I appreciate reading my letters and certainly please post them on, on any social media because they are public. Uh, but the, the due diligence, this was part of the process, the arduous process that requires experts. So it is not done in secret, but you can't guess. And everything comes together in the process that comes, uh, together. Um, so, so again, uh, uh, as, as was said by several council persons, w- we can't estimate all of the coun- all of the costs. What we know is someone said Prism got 20 million. That's not correct at all. The purchase price, which was approved on September 14th in public session, was 12.5 million less the two escrows that I just referenced. Um, plus a 330, a 383,000 dollar payment, which released certain restrictive covenants, which would have inhibited our ability to go forward with the new redevelopment plan and which constituted a release by them of an infrastructure, uh, escrow that had been established years ago. So, um, that's the price that was paid and it's all in the public record long before night. Because again, as I think the mayor said, this council, having had that information, the council never votes in a vacuum. The council passed on first reading and second reading, the bond ordinance to allow us to do that. Um, you know, we, we don't, we don't have that money without doing the bond orders. And that's what allowed us to sell the bonds on the public market. Mr. Gross may or may not be able at this point to talk what the interest rate is. But the short answer is we have among the highest bond ratings, uh, in the state of New Jersey. So, uh, those were an investment by this community in itself. So as was said earlier, so that we can, uh, chart our own destiny, hopefully, uh, with a responsible, responsive counterparty. Last comment, I, I just have to make, and I'm not sure that it was on the agenda tonight, but, uh, um, Councilman Rutherford referenced something about Essex Green and, and a tax bill settlement that was, uh, approved, uh, quite some time. So again, um, I, I, I always say this to, to every council person, but I, I just do have to say, it's not my opinion that that was a, a, a good settlement or not. Um, we, we get experts, we get valuations and that record on any, uh, we take those tax bills very, very seriously and we have, uh, we try to fight as many as possible. But we also have to be fair and equitable, um, to, to property owners and recognize the risk. Uh, and there are risks, uh, and, and specifically just so it's clear on this record, we recently sustained a significant loss that we are appealing with regard to, um, uh, what I'll call West Orange Plaza, which is, uh, where the Whole Foods is. So, so litigation has risk. And so settlements are presented when the experts provide us the information. We present them to the governing body. It would be appropriate, uh, and is always appropriate for us to answer questions. Uh, but again, when litigation is ongoing and involved, uh, often it has to be done uh, without compromising our legal position if the governing body chooses to settle or not settle. So again, I welcome always any council person, uh, meeting with our special tax appeal council and our tax assessor and our outside appraisers. Uh, and it's just, it's not Richard Trance's opinion ever because I don't have those qualifications to value, uh, property anywhere. But thank you, Council President, and I, I hope I responded to the litany of questions, which I, I do have to agree are not fairly posed in that fashion by suggesting number one, that the litigation was ever hidden. Because it wasn't. It was in every media outlet, including the New York Post. Um, and we responded to it and that there were multiples of letters that were always, uh, available on the public docket pleadings and, um, and a process that, as was said by, I, I, some of your colleagues, Council President, if we had not settled this litigation, the time expense and potential loss of opportunity would have been, uh, uh, far, uh, in excess of what we accomplished. And, and the concept that litigating with Prism for the next umpteen years um, would have yielded an opportunity for this community is about as misguided a concept as could ever be presented and, and cannot be being done intellectually honest. Because that was not a pathway that certainly this administration could in good conscience recommend to, uh, the governing body. Um, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Trank, very much. Can we take that deep breath that the mayor just mentioned before? All right, Madam President, I'm, I'm sorry, Madam Clerk.
You are Madam President.
I didn't take my deep breath yet.
Okay, uh, we're going to review the consent agenda. Approval of minutes of previous meeting, public meeting, February 15th, 2022, and executive session, February 1st, 2022.
Consent, I do want to add though, that I just thought the detailed comprehensive minutes of the executive session was excellent.
Thank you, Ken Rosenberg.
Okay.
Yes. Um, approval, I'm sorry, report of township officers, none. Reading of petitions and communications and bids, none. Uh, no bills, resolutions. Uh, Councilwoman Matute Brown pulled 3822. Are there any other resolutions being pulled this evening?
I would like to pull 28, 2522, I'm sorry, 28, 2522. I know that Mr. Keel has been on, um, for some time now to answer any questions. I know he's provided a narrative, uh, to explain the fees at the recreation department. So I have A and B. Uh, C is pulled because the mayor gave the presentation.
No, C doesn't need to be pulled.
Okay.
That can remain on there.
Okay. Um, D, the T, the chief gave the presentation on the Essex Mars, uh, grant that was awarded in December 2001 for the 525,000. Any other?
I don't want to pull D. I wanted to, um, under new business, make a recommendation. So I, I guess I don't, I don't want to pull D. I just had some commentary on D.
Okay, when we get to new matters, pending matters. And we moved our council liaison announcements to that too.
Sure, thank you.
Any other councilmen, Rutherford, I see your hand up.
Uh, yes, 4322, uh, not necessarily to vote against, but to certainly have discussion.
Okay, thank you. And I know Mr. La- uh, Mr. Lapore is still on the call because of that resolution and also for the steep sub ordinance.
Uh, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Uh, all in favor?
I, I.
Any opposed? The consent agenda is implemented. Resolution 25 dash 22, resolution establishing certain fees and rates on behalf of the Recreation Department for the 2022 season. Council President McCartney, you pulled this.
Oh, well, I pulled that too because there were quite a few questions that were raised at our last meeting. I am hoping that Mr. Keo is still here. I think, um, we talked about starting at 7:30 and now it's 9:30.
I do not see him.
I, Council President, I'm satisfied with, um, the information that was filled in. Um, so I'm okay with it. I don't know if any of my other council colleagues have additional questions.
I'm ready to approve. I don't have any questions.
Okay, thank you. And I had spoken.
Council President.
Uh, yes, I was going to say that I had spoken to Director Keo. Previously, he submitted quite a few documents to show, uh, to show to us or share with us. Uh, Councilman Rutherford, do you still have a question?
Yeah, I do. Thank you. I, um, requested the email. A few things. Um, three years of budgets. Mr. Gross this afternoon directed me to a place on the website where they are. I also asked for, where possible and re- and relevant, uh, provide the difference in the new proposed fees by sport. Um, and he did send a spreadsheet over with old and new fees. But there's no way for me to understand why we're making these, um, recommended increases. Uh, so I'm, I'm not satisfied and I'm happy to, um, if he can be brought on and answer the question, then maybe I can be. But I'm not satisfied with what I've received in response.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Uh, just for Ms. Brel, um, Mr. Keo texted me, he, he needs an invite. So she needs to send him an invite. He's been on the call.
Mr. Johnson's also on. I see, I see Edwin Johnson is on as well.
Okay.
So you want me to send the link or?
Or Trent, are they on as a guest and can be transferred over?
Edwin Johnson is on as a guest. He can be transferred over.
Okay, I can do that.
I do not see Mr. Keel.
I, I mean, Mr. Johnson is the executive, is the, is the second.
Right.
He can answer whatever questions.
Yeah, we did get a lot of information.
Okay. Edwin Johnson's coming in.
Thank you, Megan.
Edwin, you're on mute.
Yeah, it's a little organized here, sorry. I was expecting to jump on that quick. Actually, Bill's here with me, so we're both, uh.
Okay.
Great.
So Councilman Rutherford, I'm going to leave this with you because you have additional questions.
Yes, what we discussed last time was the reason why, or at least what I was asking for, was the reason why, uh, these fees are being raised. And I understand the answer that was provided at last council meeting was, uh, these are arranged and it gives the flexibility going forward, uh, should the need arise to, uh, raise the rates. But I don't understand why they're being raised now. And some are being raised now. So, um, in response to that, I asked for specific information and I just did not, um, did not get it. So if there's a way to give that information to me, uh, it already looks like we have enough votes to, to pass it. So maybe you don't want to, but that is something that I would need in order to, in order to vote for this. I need to know, you know, why are we raising these fees by these, uh, these amounts per sport? And I also wanted to see the itemized budgets, which I hadn't had a chance to look at because I wasn't responded to until, uh, today. Thank you.
Um, Mr. Keel is here and Mr. Johnson also can answer that specifically. Um, and I know that in a lot of documentation, that spelled out not necessarily the budget, but spelled out the very many programs.
Can you hear me, folks?
Yeah.
Some, some of, some of the raises that are on the spreadsheet are deceptive in the way that they read. Because, um, uh, if they were during COVID years, um, the program may have been four weeks or, or, or restricted the number of participants. And in some cases, it looks like we raised the rates when actually we're kind of catching up to pre-COVID rates. Um, we really haven't raised the whole lot. It looks like we have, but I mean, if you go through it, uh, councilmen, if, if you go, when you get the time to go through it, um, you'll, you'll be able to highlight, you know, the five or six of the, you know, 70 programs or whatever that actually have raises. And, and I can explain to you, you know, one-on-one what each of those situations were. Each one had, e- each one has a narrative on the spreadsheet that we sent you. And we thought that sufficed, but if you need to hear it from the horse's mouth, um, I don't know if you guys, you guys, it's been a long night already. If it's going to pass anyway, uh, councilman, you could just call us tomorrow. Um, or, or, or go through it. Uh, send it to me in writing, however you want to do it. And we'll be glad to, to, to clarify. But we're really not raising very, very many things.
Thank you, Bill, because you know, what I recall was the request was for the narrative and the fact that you spelled out all the program, I, I believe that that was the request. Um, the budget question came, came afterwards.
Yeah, well, the bu- any, if, if, when you need like regular budget stuff, um, that's, um, Mr. Gross's area. You know, we, we don't, we don't have all that stuff, uh, at our fingertips. So, uh, I know he took care of taking that to you. And if there were concerns about a particular program or whatever, or something, um, you know, next budget hearing, we could always take a look at that, you know?
Unfortunately, all, all of our budgets, um, in detail are available to, to the council. Number one, to the extent that, uh, you were here and worked on those budgets, you have them. And if you, if you weren't, uh, they're all on the website, uh, prominently displayed. So you, you can get to them. I apologize to, um, uh, Councilman Rutherford. My, I thought his references to budget were based on the revenue side of the budget. Since that, that was the focus of the, of the discussion. Uh, so I, 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 I misread the intent of his request until this afternoon. And as soon as he explained that to me, I sent him the link to the budgets so that he could look at them. So I, and, but that's a lot to take in an hour or two, I'm sure. So.
I mean, uh, we, we, I went through, councilman, I, I went through this in anticipation of your questions. And I yellow highlighted, you know, six or seven programs that, that, that look like they're being raised or, or might, that might have caught your eye. Um, I don't know if we want to go through them tonight, but, um, if, if that's what you want, you know, we'll do it right now if you want to.
So, you know.
You'd rather pick your own and, and go from there. That's fine too.
Yeah, I'm happy to spend some time with you, Mr. Keel.
Okay.
Um, I will say that, you know, I, I saw the two, uh, attachments that Mr. Gross sent me yesterday at 3:30.
Uh.
Um, it does provide some information. It does not really provide the information that I want. But I think you have, uh, a better ability to provide the clarity. Now, I'm not prepared to vote, uh, for it. I don't think, uh, you'll need my vote. And if you will, then, uh, perhaps we should table it. Until I have some clarity, because I certainly don't want to handicap our Recreation Department. Um, it is certainly one of the departments that families in town rely on the most. Um, and looking at the spreadsheet that you delivered, provided, um, uh, some, uh, insight for me with the breadth of programs. You know, I'm a, I'm a dad girl, a girl dad rather. So, you know, I don't partic- my kids don't participate in all of this stuff.
Yeah.
But it was good to see the, the breadth of the programming that you offer. However, you know, there's still some questions on my side and I'd like to spend some time with you. If you'll need my vote and you may want to poll the council, uh, Council President, if you'll need my vote, then I suggest we table it.
Okay, that's fair. Whatever you guys want to do.
Councilwoman Castellino.
Yeah, and, you know, and Mr. Keel, when you sit with, with, with my council colleague, go over a lot so he could understand and, and if any, my other council colleagues, you know, I, I've been very close to the Recreation Department, coming from the Board of Ed's side. And where we have, uh, Mr. Keel, Mr. Johnson, they work very closely with our high school coaches. I know we're excited this year. We have Coach Grant and the, the football, um, uh, the high school football team coming to do a, a, you know, clinic with you. Um, baseball, uh, basketball, I, I know, uh, Coach Kenees, you know, you, you, you have numerous programs working with our high school coaches. And that's why we've been seeing such great successes with our student athletes because of the programming that we're trying to work with our youth athletes and then building our programs up to the high school and having our high school coaches work directly with the Recreation Department. So if the, you know, if, if you want to give a little seminar and, uh, you know, sit down with our colleagues, I, I think it'd be really helpful, um, on your own time, because it's, it's impressive. I think you'll be very impressed of what we offer for recreation and the time that both Mr. Keel, Mr. Johnson spend with our high school staff. I mean, last week, he met with, uh, Coach Sekala. They, obviously we share fields to save the taxpayers money. That scheduling is very time consuming for them to coordinate year after year. And, um, you know, they, they sat for a couple hours last week and on an easy task to schedule out all the athletic programs that we offer all of our residents and, and, and trying to find space at West Orange High School Campus, Liberty Middle School and Roosevelt. So I, I want to thank them for the time they put in. And I know they've been sitting there since 7:30 tonight. So thank, thank you, gentlemen. But I think it'll be helpful to really dive deep into, um, all the programming. Because you do a tremendous job. So thank you.
Thank you.
Councilwoman.
I just want to.
Sorry, that's Bill.
I just want to clarify, my, my concern is not with regard to the, uh, quality of the programming or the. or the effort it takes on the part of Mr. Kehoe or his colleagues in that department. My concern is with regard to how we came to the place where we needed to raise the fees by these amounts.
Sure.
And that's it, yep.
And they're not the American amount. So I appreciate your consideration, Councilman Rutherford. And I truly appreciate the time and effort and the extra steps that Bill Kehoe and Edwin are helping to move the process. And Councilwoman Williams, I do see your hand up.
Thank you, Council President. I just wanted to indicate again that I've done a little bit of due diligence and research with the fees. And I do understand that if we comparatively look at the fees, that we're not out of sync with our neighboring communities. And so with that being the case, you know, it is always my concern that, you know, West Orange, we're viewed as a, you know, a bougie suburb in some regards, right? We're neighboring some of our urban communities. And so when we look at that, that was my rationale for offering discounts when we have families that have more than one child in our recreation programs. But at the end of the day, you know, once I reviewed the fees, had an opportunity to go back and look at what our neighboring communities are charging, I'm comfortable with what West Orange is charging. I actually think we're commensurate and in some cases, lower. So, you know, we have to keep in mind that we are a diverse community. And one of the things I took into consideration that Mr. Kehoe said, and at some point, you know, as a community, we've got to trust the people who are in leadership capacities and opportunities. And Mr. Kehoe said that if anybody presents a challenge to him, that he is willing to entertain and make concessions. And so while that may not be something that is across the board, these are opportunities where the community can revert back, can come to him and say, hey, I heard that if I'm having a hardship and I want participation for my family and my children, that you're willing to entertain that. And so with that being the case, we also have to know that in any other instance where we have community complaints and resistance, that we have to respect that. And so at this particular point and opportunity, we haven't heard complaints. These increases are commensurate with neighboring communities. And so we don't want to not be with the norm. We don't want to create a hardship. But we have very clearly articulated and can continue to reiterate that if it is a hardship, if you're not comfortable going to the Recreation Department, that's why we're your elected officials. Come to us. Bring your complaints, your frustrations, your challenges and your concerns to us as administrators and let us help you. And so I reiterate that not to my council colleagues exclusively, but to the residents of West Orange. It is not about creating a financial hardship for a recreation opportunity. Look, if your kid wants to participate, we want them to participate. Let us know, let the Recreation Department know of your hardship, of your challenge, and we will figure out and make a way. We're not indicating that exceptions cannot be made. And from what I understand from Mr. Kehoe and Mr. Johnson's guidance, as far as a Recreation Department is concerned, there will, if a kid is willing to participate, they're not going to say no. And so I think we have to take that into consideration. And as you indicated, you know, Councilman Rutherford, if he doesn't need your vote, and again, it's not to say that we don't want all of us to be in agreement. We want you to be an advocate for those that may have a differing view or may not be in agreement with the majority. But what I want to communicate to West Orange is that this administration is not anti-community. This leadership that you have elected is not anti-community. We are willing to listen, we are willing to assist. So what I do want to communicate is that if you, as an individual resident, is challenged or has an issue, you have a resource in five elected officials that you can communicate to one of us, if not all of us, via council@westorange.org. If you're not comfortable communicating information to all of us, then reach out to us individually. And you can do that by seeking our own individual accounts, email accounts, so that you can make your voices heard. But at the end of the day, again, I've walked away comfortable, again, doing due diligence, communicating with other townships that border us, that our fees are not outside of the norm. And I want that to be communicated to our residents in West Orange. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Can I just say one thing before we get too far? I just want to mention that the Recreation Department, you know, runs a lot of programs and the PAL, the Mountain Top, the Basketball Clubs, they run programs too. And every one of them has an understanding of what you just said and has, you know, walked the walk, so to speak, and helped families in the past and will continue to do so. So these assists have traditionally been taking place. And as long as me and Edwin are still kicking, they're going to continue to take place.
Thank you, Bill. I wanted to also mention that when Councilwoman Williams, Councilwoman Williams just mentioned financial hardship. Bill, as soon as you heard that word, I saw your screen unmute. Because I know going over the Recreation Budget year after year, it is first and foremost on your mind when preparing programming and budgeting to always keep the residents in mind when you are establishing your fees. So we certainly appreciate that. Councilwoman Castellino, yes?
Yeah, sorry. And just to piggyback on what Mr. Kehoe just said, you know, this being a booster, booster parent mom for so many years, we also have our booster clubs, many of them on the youth level that the Recreation Director works with and also at the high school level. So this spring, when you see our kids outside that high school asking you to see if you want to come to the car wash, go get your car washed. Because this is where all this funding goes to, to help our student athletes with whatever their needs that they have. I just wanted to.
Clothing drives, excellent, excellent point. Clothing drives, all of that.
All that, so just, you know, support all your booster clubs. Because that's where the money, you know, when I was a lacrosse booster mom, we raised the money and we helped pay for training for our young athletes that couldn't, you know, didn't have the funds for themselves. So local support is always great. I won't belabor the conversation. Thank you.
Councilman Rutherford, I believe you're going to meet with Bill and Edwin and you can go over that budget. And that's not to say we don't need your vote. But I feel like you do still have questions that you want answered. I'm going to ask, we can take a voice vote right now, Madam Clerk, on this particular resolution?
Is there a motion? Do you want me to poll the council or take a vote?
Oh, sorry. We can take it, what do you have to do? I don't know, what do we do first? Just poll the council?
I would.
Yeah, make a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Matute Brown?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
No.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President McCartney? Council President?
Yes.
Thank you, I didn't hear that, okay. 3822 Resolution Establishing the Application Fees for Licenses for Operation of Cannabis Entities Within the Township of West Orange. Councilwoman Matute Brown, you pulled this.
Thank you. I pulled it not to vote against it, obviously, as I don't vote against my own interests out of the townships. But this is on behalf of the West Orange Cannabis Task Force Advisory Committee. And in the First Ordinance 2467 that we passed with respect to cannabis, we'd included just the application fee. And so we thought, you know, as things are changing, since this is all a new process, both for the state and for our township, we thought it would just be easier to do, make those changes via resolution as opposed to an ordinance. So when we amended the last ordinance, we removed the fee from that structure and are now going to introduce this resolution for the council's approval. I did create for the council and for the public, if Madam Moderator, can you share, were you able to upload what I sent you? I did a side-by-side comparison of the fees that the township is proposing in Resolution 3822 versus that of the CRCs. And the CRC has, we tried to align as much as we could, but obviously, understanding our goal and focus on the social justice equity portion, we wanted to make sure that the micro businesses, those who are applying for micro businesses didn't have to expand too much in application fees and licensing. So what you're looking at here, to the top right where it says application and certification fees, these are all from the CRC, the Cannabis Regulatory Commission. And you'll see where it's conditional license, standard business versus a micro business. You obviously see that there is a difference in the fee structure there. The annual license applicant, standard business, micro business, there is a significant decrease in those fees for micro businesses. And then the approval fee, so you have your application fee, you have your approval fee, conditional conversion, which we're not doing, so we won't get into that. We're not doing testing, so we will not get into that. And the expanded ATC, we do not currently have a medicinal dispensary that would be converting, so we're not going to look at that. So what we're looking at are the application fees for standard and micro business. These are the licensing fees, cultivator licensing fees from the CRC are listed here by tier, from tier one, starting at $5,000. And then the comparison for micro businesses, you will see that are also just one fee and not tiered, just to make it more affordable in hopes that we do engage our impacted communities of color when applying for a micro business license. And that's not just, that's also for the businesses that are applying as minority women or veterans, you know, so their fees are less than your traditional standard fees. That's the Cannabis Regulatory Commission side. What the task force discussed and decided was to keep the fees for qualified micro businesses to $1,000. So if you look at the approval, the application submission fee, here, well, that's, yeah, this is the annual license, is $200 and then there's an $800 approval fee. This is the $1,000 fee for the micro businesses. For cultivators, it's a $5,000 application fee. I'm sorry, licensing fee, these are licensing fees. Because the application fee stays at 500, that we did not change. But what changes is this, the $5,000 for cannabis cultivators who are using up to 10,000 square feet of cannabis plant grow canopy area. Anything above 10,000 square feet for cannabis cultivators is a dollar per square feet for every square greater than 10,000 feet of the cannabis canopy. And by canopy, you know, you'll have a cannabis canopy with every cannabis plant, right, that forms a canopy. So if there's 10,000, if there's 10,000 square feet, then it's a $5,000 cannabis cultivator licensing fee. If it's over 10,000, then it's a 5,000 plus an additional dollar per square foot. That's the same mechanism that we use for the cannabis manufacturer as well. The fee for cannabis micro businesses that are manufacturers are $1,000. And for traditional businesses, it'll be $1,000 plus the $2 for each square foot of space that's proposed at the manufacturing location. For distributors, the same, $1,000 for the micro businesses and then a dollar for traditional businesses, in addition to the $1,000, it's a dollar for each square feet of space that they propose at the location. And for cannabis retailers, same for the micro businesses, hasn't changed. And then for the traditional, it'll be a dollar per square foot of the retailer store and store space at the proposed location. So it's for the traditional, it's $1,000 plus a dollar for each square foot. And we thought that this was the fairest way to proceed. I know that the chief is on as well, is he still on with us, chief? In the, oh, in the, thank you, chief. In the discussions that we've had, you know, we've gone back and forth looking at what the CRC recommends as fees versus where we fit in that. Because we do have by statute the ability to set those fees. So, chief, can you talk to, because this was the chief's suggestion here, the, you know, to find a way to differentiate the fees between the micro businesses, which we anticipate are going to be smaller businesses versus the traditional. So, chief, can you talk to the per square feet fee that you recommended to the task force?
So I kind of, you know, if I recall correctly, I kind of came up with the idea of doing a square footage rather than a overall fee. But I don't know that we ever, did we ever land on an actual dollar cost per square foot? I don't recall, you know, coming up with a number.
Yeah, so we did. The dollar per square foot for the up to 10,000 square feet, in addition, anything over 10,000, let me say, anything over 10,000 for cultivators is a dollar per square foot.
Okay. That seems pretty fair and equitable.
And then for manufacturers, it's the $2 in addition to the $1,000 per square foot. And so when we were discussing this, it was about trying to find a way to make it reasonable without, you know, burdening the applicants. Council, Council President, I see Councilwoman Williams and Councilwoman Castellino's hand up.
Councilwoman Castellino?
A council, who had their hand up? I'm not sure who had it first, I'm sorry. Is he, Councilwoman Williams?
Michelle, you're muted.
Oh.
You muted yourself again.
Sorry. If Councilwoman Williams wants to go first, I'll defer.
Okay, you heard this. Councilwoman.
Thank you, Council President, thank you, Councilwoman Castellino. My question, Councilwoman Matute Brown, was why there was the increase in $2 per square foot, if I'm understanding that correctly, for manufacturers? I just wanted to understand why and for the benefit of the public to explain why there was that increase in that particular division.
So when we're looking at the, and we're looking at what the revenue is, obviously, we're looking at two things, right? The sustainability of the businesses that we obviously want to make sure that they're going to be sustainable, but also the opportunity for the municipality to generate revenue, right, to be able to do that. So for manufacturers, their potentially larger operation. So for manufacturers, they're potentially larger operations with the ability to earn more revenue. So we were looking at, you know, ways to balance that out. So we thought two dollars per square foot, since this is only a thousand dollars versus the five thousand for the cannabis cultivator, we thought was a way to make it fair between the two. That's how they came up with that.
And so as a follow up, my only statement, not, not definitive statement, just, just inquiry, so to speak, would just simply be availability. So we know that in West Orange, we have limited availability. And it's not just necessarily because of property. It, it's also a condition of the, the market, right? We're, we're in a distressed market as far as availability is concerned. It's very tight. And so the only concern that I would ask, not challenging what we have decided to present, just understanding logic, again, just for the general public. Availability is extremely limited in West Orange as a municipality. So granted, these spaces might not necessarily be available. And, and we're still waiting for an overlay map to identify what may or may not be available in West Orange. So to that point, that would be my only question, not doubting or, or suggesting that the evaluation and determination of the task force is, is not suitable for West Orange. But just presenting, you know, being devil's advocate, how, how did we come to that, to that evaluation?
Like I said, just the differentiation between a cultivator, traditional cultivator, because that's where it applies, not micro businesses. They're paying, the fee for them, the licensing fee is five thousand, where a manufacturer is a thousand plus the two dollars per square foot. And I completely understand, and it's one of our frustrations when, when we have meetings, because, you know, we have to be able to find, you know, a way to, to help these businesses be successful. In order to do that, they need to have a place to set up, which has been incredibly challenging, because it's not just the inventory. The other thing to take into consideration, obviously, is the landlord. There are some landlords that just absolutely do not welcome the cannabis industry. There's others that are collie. And, you know, it's, we are limited in all of these perspectives. But trying to just make between, and I'm using my cursor, like you can see my cursor, it's not my cursor, but the cannabis cultivator, again, the traditional applicant, the annual licensing fee is five thousand versus that of a manufacturer, which is a thousand. So we were just trying to kind of close that gap a little bit. And the reason for your traditional annual cannabis cultivator, that the fee is higher, although not as high as in so many other places, if you're looking at even the CRC, you know, tier one, tier two, tier three, you know, four. This goes from five tier one, which is five thousand dollars, to tier six, fifty thousand dollars. That is a lot. You know, we thought, let's just, let's start here. This is where we are, and just trying to close that gap.
Thank you, thank you.
You're welcome.
I just wanted to make another comment, too, that I really thank you for this explanation. And since the industry is so new to us and to the community, then I appreciate the time and effort the Advisory Task Force has put into compiling this information for us. They think we're talking about two separate tracks, a parallel track, that yes, inventory may be limited in our B one, two, and industrial zones, but we still do need to establish these application fees. So I think, one, yes, they are related, and we know that there is limited inventory, but we do still need to establish these fees. So I still think they're, it's a parallel work that you're doing. And I thank you for it. Councilwoman Castellino?
Just, I guess with, so because this is a new, and I should have asked this at one of our meetings, but my mind is, you know, thinking about it now. Because this is such a new business, and I know Mr. Moon, who's been working with us, you know, we could always make amendments as we go along. Can we, if you get a license and we decide maybe some of the fees may be too low, can we always raise them down the road? That's the one question I.
So yes, and that's why we thought to do, to take it out of the ordinance, because obviously, the ordinance, you have the first reading and then second reading. Doing it by resolution just facilitates that process for, for the council. So yeah.
Because I'd like to analyze this next year and see whether the towns are doing. As we know, this is, I know we want to help and get people started, but at the end of the day, this is a lucrative business.
Yeah.
So, and, and the whole reason that I said yes, because I've, I've been the one that's been having, you know, trouble with this, is for the revenue for the township.
I, I like to think of you, Councilwoman Castellino, having trouble with it, but you do represent the voices that don't necessarily, you know, seventy-five percent of the voters in, in West Orange voted yes for question one. So there is a percentage of our population, our residents, who don't support it. So you're not causing trouble.
Appreciate your understanding where, where my business.
I mean, it's why I wanted your voice, that was not necessarily my voice on the, you know, on the task force. So we can consider those things. And, you know, everything from, you know, the list that we're comprising to review our ordinance, to make sure that we're getting, you know, to your point, Councilwoman Castellino, you know, the working, the organizational documents for LLCs, to know who's there. And so all of these things are up for change, but this just makes it easier to change fees, should we need to either up or down either.
Yeah, no, we know, it was definitely a great idea, so thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilwoman Matute Brown, I have another question on the, on D in the resolution for the cannabis micro businesses, retail, retailers.
Yes.
Is there, the square footage is a minimum of twenty-five hundred square feet? Is that?
For, for micro businesses.
For the state, per state regulations.
That's just micro businesses. Your annual applicants can, you know, whatever, you know, whatever they, they can find a place to accommodate there. You know, some of these are really large, large industries that are going to do well over ten thousand square feet.
But the, the, the idea and the concept is, and you have to understand what the state of New Jersey was looking at equity for this industry. And so when you look at all those components of where we're going, that's why there is a separate tiered entity and price position for micro businesses and then regular cannabis businesses. And so we have to understand, as much as, you know, I, I get feedback and I see feedback that talks about why do you want to do a black business, whatever? This industry is retribution to those who have been marginalized, to those have, who have been institutionalized for violations of a law that was inequitable to people of color. And so we, as the municipality, have got to take the same posture as the state of New Jersey. We have to keep in mind that there are people who are willing to entertain and enter this business that may not have a completely spotless record, that may have been, you know, reprimanded for, for their intake. And so we, as a community, have to embrace that. We have to, we have to.
It, it is, it is the reason why the micro businesses for the task force are, you know, it's important for us to be able to focus on that. We, we're doing the, we're already accepting the applications for the adult use. So hopefully, we'll get some micro businesses in that can find spaces and, you know, be able to set up shop here. I know, I, I remember Mr. Jackson mentioned that, you know, he's been in the industry for a long time. And I know that he's looking, because he does come to the task force meetings. Mr. Jackson, I've also heard you on the planning board meetings, when I listen to the recordings. So I know that there, there is interest, and for us, it's, it's very important to, to focus on those. With respect to the state of New Jersey, however, they have been, unfortunately, however much they've tried to regulate, it's not necessarily transferring into action. There's only been two licenses awarded for, to black owned cannabis entities in the state. So hopefully, that does change as, as the next round of applications come out on the fifteenth. But we are ready and, and our request for applications is on our website. So I'm hopeful that people are getting ready to apply.
Thank you. Councilman Rutherford, yes?
Thank you, Council President. I, just two things, I want to echo what Councilwoman Matute Brown just said. I think we need to do better than the state. The state has done an abysmal job of social justice and equity with regard to African Americans and people of color in particular, who have borne the brunt of the damage from these marijuana laws. So I think we have to do better than the state, and I am encouraged by our approach thus far. I just had a second question, though, it was, it was a point of clarification. I think I just heard someone say, the minimum square footage for a micro business is twenty-five hundred square feet?
No, that's, that's what, that's what they can have, that's it, that's applies.
That's what I was gonna say, that's the maximum, right? It's twenty-five hundred, you can't go above that.
No.
That's true, that's not true.
No, for micro businesses?
What is the? Yeah, so go ahead, clarify that. What I heard was the minimum square footage is twenty-five hundred square feet.
That, that's, that's what they can have. Now, if they want to expand and transition their license to an annual, then they make that application and then they can expand beyond that. And they also cannot have more than ten employees in their, in their business for micro businesses.
Right, so it's not the minimum, it's the maximum. You can't have more than twenty-five hundred square feet.
That's it.
Thank you.
And ten employees, and hopefully, those employees will be from West Orange. That's the hope.
Oh, thank you.
If there are no more questions, then.
So I, I'm just gonna say, as, as the Economic Development Commission liaison, that I welcome all West Orange residents and those who have any desire to have the information of what is required in West Orange. Please, please, please tune in on Monday at six P M. Councilwoman Matute Brown will be going over the complete process. We have designated this meeting for full transparency and to devote any questions and inquiries into the cannabis industry and what is to be in West Orange. We all understand, again, that we have some transformational projects coming to West Orange. And, and, you know, thankfully, we have designated council members who are adept and attuned to answer all of your questions. So any additional information that is necessary and or needed before the March fifteenth application process, please tune in on, on March, Monday, March sixth for additional information. Thank you.
Council President, if I may also add to that, thank you, Councilwoman Williams. On our website, we do have the Cannabis Advisory Task Force page on there. There is an email link that you can ask questions on. Our chief, thank you, chief, for always being so ready to respond. I really appreciate it. Sometimes those emails come in during the day and I'm working, so I can't, but certainly appreciate all of your efforts, chief, and this whole process.
And chief, while you may not have received a, a formal invitation as yet, please save the date.
Look, he's.
Yeah, yeah.
Another meeting? Is it gonna be this long?
No, 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 we're, we're, look, we, we, we adhere to time constraint over here.
So Councilwoman Matute Brown, thank you very much for preparing this for us as further the explanation and this industry for us. And Councilwoman Castellino, and please, chief, for serving on the Advisory Task Force. Very much appreciate it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So I make a motion, let's do this. I was gonna make a motion?
Yes.
Is there a second?
I, I'm gonna defer to Councilwoman Matute Brown, she seconded that.
Okay. Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Matute Brown?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President McCartney?
Thank you. Thank you all.
Forty-three dash twenty-two, resolution authorizing a contract with Messercola Excavating Company, Inc. for the Mellon Avenue Sanitary Sewer Improvement Project in the amount of one hundred and fifty thousand thirty-seven dollars. I don't know who pulled this.
I did.
Okay, thank you.
So I, I wanted to say, I reached out to Director Lenny Lapore today regarding this particular award. And, and I, I'm, I'm voting for it. I said initially, I wanted to pull it, not to necessarily vote against it. I want to just make two points. Number one, I wasn't able to join on time this, tonight, when we welcomed his new assistant. I, I did not have the link, it's not that I was late, I could not join. But I wanted to say, I don't know if this is indicative of the impact she's already having, but Mr. Lapore, in a very short period of time, provided a very thorough, very detailed response to every single question I asked. And he did it in a way that I think encourages these kinds of, this kind of conversation around how to get better outcomes for West Orange. My, my concern was that there was a West Orange business that had bid, was close to the lowest bidder. I don't know the folks at that particular company, I don't have any relationships there, but certainly wanted to advocate on behalf of, of a West Orange business. And Mr. Lapore and his team responded in a way that I thought was helpful in moving the ball forward. That, that was the first thing. And the second thing is, you know, in our council meetings, we frequently say lowest responsive bidder. And, and his, and I always thought it was lowest responsible bidder. And it is lowest responsible bidder. And I thank him for that, right? Because we will use terminology sometimes in a loose and casual way that does not actually get at what the law says. He was not offended by that. He was encouraging of the dialogue. And as a result of that, what would initially have been a no vote for me, and I'm not asking Mr. Lapore any questions, because he's already answered all of them. I see he's, he's off mute. What initially would have been a no vote for me is certainly not a no vote anymore. So I wanted to thank Mr. Lapore publicly for such a thorough and prompt response. I, I have not received a response like that yet to questions that I've had, and I think this was the model for how to do it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Thank you.
Is there a motion to approve forty-three dash twenty-one?
So moved.
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Matute Brown?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President McCartney?
Yes.
Okay. Ordinances on first reading, twenty-six seventy-eight dash twenty-two, and ordinance amending and supplementing Chapter twenty-five, Section twenty-eight of the General Ordinances of the Township of West Orange entitled Steep Slope and Natural Features Ordinance. Is there a motion to introduce on first reading? Oh, go ahead, sorry.
Council President, if I may, I discussed this with Mr. Trank earlier tonight by phone. There are two very minor errors, what I'll call typographical errors, in this ordinance that's on for first reading. The first one is on page five, paragraph number twelve. Um, the first one is on page five, paragraph number 12. Uh, it's the last sentence, and I'm gonna read it. The determination of soap stability, of slope stability, it says should and it should be shall include, but is not limited to, and it goes on from there. So we, we need to amend the should to a shall on page five and paragraph 12. And I can certainly, either Mr. Trank or myself can certainly send a corrected version to the clerk tomorrow if she can't make that change herself. Um, there is one other change on page nine. And it's in, I guess it's about two-thirds of the way down. It's in the section adequate contiguous area, twenty-five dash twenty-eight point nine. Um, it says shall determine whether adequate continuous area and it should be contiguous instead of continuous. It's just a typographical error.
Madam Clerk, if it's necessary, I will ask for the amendment of these changes.
Okay. Okay, is there a second on that?
Second.
A moment. I do want to just briefly go through the amendments. We did ask for this to be numbered. I didn't see the page numbers on it, but, um.
It is numbered.
Okay. I don't have my copy, but, um, paragraphs 12, 13, 14, and 15 serve as the amendments to our steep slope ordinance. Um, that the, uh, number 12 says a developer of a parcel with steep slopes shall submit a geotechnical analysis of the slope stability and the need for remedial work such as shaping of the rock face, pinning or grouting of the exposed rock for stabilization and the installation of safety netting in the area of concern. And, and goes into detail on the expertise and qualifications of a professional geotechnical engineer to conduct that work. Uh, in paragraph thirteen that was added, the potential for rock slides exist. A rockfall zone or catchment area width shall be provided at the toe of the slope. The required width of the rockfall zone would be determined, would be determined by this geotechnical engineer utilizing established criteria such as those developed by Arthur M. Ritchie and included in the Rockfall Catchment Area Design Guide, and the website is listed there. And in paragraph fourteen, the developer of a parcel with steep slopes shall prepare maintenance plan. This was important for us to have a maintenance plan to ensure that the slope is maintained in a safe and stable condition over the years. The maintenance plan should include site inspections every two years. That would include visual observations with pertinent photos of the slope, rock face, and the vegetation status of the site. And the steep slope maintenance plan must be prepared again by a New Jersey licensed geotechnical engineer. Must be recorded against the data of the record for each property on which the slope is located. And that would run with the property. And paragraph fifteen, where for areas of the top of the steep slope, the minimum setback of 30 feet is required from the top of the slope to any proposed improvements such as building roads, parking lots, septic fields, swimming pools, hot tubs, ponds, or other uses at or near the top of the slopes, except as otherwise recommended by the qualified, uh, professional. Where development is near steep slopes greater than 30%, increase setback to a minimum of 50 feet, except as otherwise recommended by the professional. The minimum setback would be established considering site-specific topographic conditions and the recommendations of the qualified professional geotechnic, engineer performing the slope stability analysis and other engineering data deemed reasonably necessary by the township engineer and planner to determine compliance with this chapter. So that was added to address the issues that were raised, um, to amend our ordinance to recognize any work that needed to be done at the top of each slope.
So Council President, as a point of order, I think with the recommendations that Attorney Ken Kaiser has suggested, um, that we need to make those amendments before we vote on the ordinance in total. Um, Mr. Kaiser, am I correct in that or no?
Um, ye- yes, but, uh, that's why I called for those amendments to be made. I think you moved and I, I think there was a vote in favor of making those amendments.
There was no vote. There was.
There was no vote, yeah.
Okay.
Again, we'll make note of the recommendations that were just made, and then I see Mr. Rutherford has a question. We can take other questions and make all of those changes at one time.
Well, I also should point out, this is on first reading. You're not gonna, you're not adopting this tonight. Um, and Madam Clerk, in the event, um, that you think it's necessary, or we can talk about it tomorrow morning, it probably should be re-advertised, um, if it's already been advertised with those changes, um, just to be safe.
That's why I wanted to have the discussion this evening. I'm first reading. Okay, Councilman Rutherford?
So, so I'm, I'm unclear. Are we asking questions now or no?
Well, yes, we can.
Okay. So, uh, just a couple. On paragraph 15, um, there's in the first sentence, for areas at the top of a steep slope, a minimum setback of 30 feet is required. And then further down, it says where development is near steep slopes greater than 30%, increase the setback to a minimum of 50 feet. I'm not a geotechnical engineer. I'm curious, how did we arrive at the 30 foot, um, in the first sentence? How did we arrive at the 50 foot in the second one I referenced? And is it safe, or how do we know, determine if it's safe to build on a development, I mean, build on a slope that's greater than 30%? And is there a maximum upon which we will no longer allow folks to build? Maximum percentage, a slope percentage?
So, Mr. Laporte?
Well, with, with respect to, um, the, the comments about the 30 feet and the 50 feet, uh, unfortunately, John Hess, who is the, the board's, um, uh, engineer, uh, was hired to, I shouldn't say unfortunately, he was hired. He was hired. Unfortunately, he's not here, uh, tonight to comment on that. But those were recommendations that, that he came up with, um, using, um, the professionals that are within his firm.
Okay, wha- what about, um, and thank you for that answer. What about, um, building? It says, you know, uh, where development is near steep slopes greater than 30%. That does not mean we're building on a slope greater than 30%. That means where we have a development that is built near a slope that is 30% or greater. Is that right? Am I saying that right?
That's correct, and, and we want a further setback, uh, from, from that slope, uh, that is in excess of 30%.
Okay. Um, I, I was just making sure that I was clear on what that was saying. I have a, a general question too, and I have a, one more, uh, I have at least one more, if that's all right. Um, for individual homeowners, where, where, where we're not talking about an actual development, but where a home is built near a steep slope and that homeowner either has to, as a result of this, build a retaining wall or do some other mitigation effort, or already has done that. Are there resources for them in the maintenance? We speak to the maintenance in paragraph 14, um, and the inspections being done every two years. Are there loan programs? Are there any other resources to help individual homeowners that may have to face some mitigation, uh, because of where they are?
Um, the, the answer is, I, I'm not aware of any funding for that, but there, they may fall under one of the exceptions that is listed on, on the bottom of page three.
Correct. It, uh, Lenny, you hit the nail on the head, I think. At twenty-five dash twenty-eight point five, exceptions to section 25 dash 28. Um, existing single-family home is built before the day this ordinance is approval. Additions to such homes or rebuilding of such homes after a disaster. This section, it doesn't apply to them. So, um, there's, again, there's other exceptions here. Um, and I, but I think that's the intent. This is for, for new developments, for new construction, I believe only.
And, and is that for new individ, single-family homes as well?
Good development, yeah.
I see, like, when I use the word development, I think of more than a single-family home. But I, I understand that, I understand it to mean single-family homes as well.
All new builds, right?
Single-family homes. A- as opposed to somebody building one home o- on a vacant lot?
Okay, so it does not mean one home on a lot. It means a cluster of single-family homes.
No, it, it could also mean.
No, no, no. It could mean a home on a single lot if it is in violation of the ordinance. Yeah, yeah.
All new.
Mr. Laporte?
Yes, it, it could mean, uh, if somebody were to, uh, buy a vacant lot and wanted to develop a home on it, this, this ordinance would need to be followed.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. In that same paragraph, twenty-five dash twenty-eight point five A, it says, existing single-family homes built before the date of this ordinance is approval. Additions to such homes or rebuilding of such homes after a de, uh, a disaster. So does that mean if an addition is built as the result of a disaster, then they fall into the exception? Or is that for any addition built on a home? A single-family home?
Well, it, it certainly, it, it, it's an exemption if you're adding to an existing home. However, I, I think that if you're, if you're going to expand a home that was damaged after a disaster, um, you're gonna increase the footprint of it. I, I believe this ordinance would be triggered.
So I think, I, I'm unclear, Mr. Kaiser. I, I don't know if, if that, my concern is that you, you could allow someone that has a single-family home to significantly increase the footprint of that home and not be subject to this steep slope ordinance if it's a single-family home? And that might not be the best thing.
Well, I think if you have, if it has to go for subdivision or site plan approval, if you, I think it would have to go through site plan approval, Lenny, wouldn't it, if there was an addition to a home or?
Not, not, not if they met, met the setback, uh, or, or bulk requirements of, of the ordinance.
Okay.
Okay, so if they violate that.
In addition to that, typically, and, and I'm not saying this is gonna follow any type of rule, because, you know, obviously, all rules are made to be expanded or whatever have you. But i- if you are from an insurance perspective in a real estate environment and you are repairing after destruction, insurance is only going to replace what was existing. It is not going to include an, an add-on or, or build out. So you have to keep in mind that if it is because of a disaster and you are triggering an insurance redevelopment, they're not going to include redevelopment costs for something that was not already existing. So in that capacity, you're going to have to go before the zoning or the planning board to expand whatever footprint that existed if it was not already there. That, that's just real estate 101.
Well, u- u- unless, unless.
Yeah.
Unless the zoning allows for the expansion already. So if the zoning, you know, in other words, if that, in that circumstance, if the property owner wants to put their own money into it to do an expansion while they're doing it, as long as, is it, as, as I understand it, as long as it was within the existing zone and it didn't require variance or anything like that, they, they would be able to do that. Because if you didn't exclude them, uh, you would then render that property, uh, immediately with less value.
Right.
Because you, you know, to a, to a buyer, they could not look to put on an addition, uh, in, in the future. Uh, so it would, it would reduce the value of the property. And I think that's probably the intention was to exempt existing single-family homes uh, and preserve the, the rights that a single-family homeowner has today. Those, but anything new that's built would have to meet these standards.
Yes, totally agree.
If I can, if I can make a general suggestion, Council President, it's that any questions that you folks have, um, you may wanna write them down and submit them, and we may want to arrange to have Mr. Hess available at the second reading, um, since he's the one who is our advisor with respect to this and that has the technical qualifications to answer at least the technical questions. Um, it, it might be a good idea. So, and he can, if we can provide him with the questions ahead, ahead of time, he'll be prepared and can answer those questions, be prepared to answer those questions when we have the public hearing.
But I, I just want to point out, uh, Ken, that, that twenty-five dash twenty-eight point five, that's, uh, language unchanged from the existing ordinance. The only, only change is the letters matter in red.
Right.
Yeah, I think that's just a little unclear, and that's what I was getting at. Uh, and I'm happy to, to do that. And do we also just submit typos to that as well? Because there are other typos in here.
If you see a typo, please let us know quickly. I picked up those two. If there are more, we need to, now that we should address, because if we're gonna re-advertise, we need to advertise the correct version of the ordinance.
Uh, sure.
Go ahead.
So, I mean, I, I'll send him, send you the typos. It's not a, I mean, I don't think we need to take time to do that.
Do you have additional questions?
Uh, not for these gentlemen, but I will. It is a technical question. It's on, uh, twenty-five, twenty-eight, ten. I will forward it to Mr. Hess so that he can be prepared to answer.
Councilman, if the, the council, if all the members of the council would forward to me your questions, and then we'll send them all to Mr. Hess at one time.
I, I just have a quick one.
Councilman Rutherford, any more questions? Okay. Councilwoman Castelino?
Just real quick, Mr. Kaiser in here, um, I know I covered the question, but if a homeowner wanted to put a pole in, is that covered in this?
Um, I mean, again, I don't know for sure. I don't know for sure. I don't know for sure. And it may be as, as much a technical question as it is a legal question. Um, so, again, it's the kind of thing that we should pose to Mr. Hess, I think. But it may, may depend on the, on the specific facts of the proposed new construction. So, and, and where it is with respect to a steep slope. So it may not be the kind of question that can really be answered in a general sense. It may be specific to a specific development or construction.
From a real estate perspective, I don't know how anything can be general. It all has to be specific to the parcel, because if, if there's a steep slope that exists, i- it can't be a general ordinance. It has to be specific to the parcel.
So that brings me back to that, the exceptions at twenty-five dash, excuse me, twenty-five, yes, twenty. I'm five, I'm losing my voice.
Yeah.
The, the end of that sentence, I think, should say additions to such homes, rebuilding of such house, homes after that disaster on the existing footprint. I feel like that needs to be added there. Because how can they be exempt if they're, are near a slope? I don't know what just happened to my voice.
Well, if, 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 if a, if a home under this current, my understanding, the current reading, if a home is not destroyed, you have a right to do an expansion, if, if, if it exists today. So it, it would not be, uh, logical to say, if you lost your home, that you would lose that right to have an expansion. Now, that doesn't mean you couldn't do it, but I, I think that was not the intention. The intention, I believe the intention was not to take any rights away from existing property owners or, or, so.
I know, but I feel like that's what we're trying to address. We're trying to stay away from the slopes.
Typically, on a resale of a home, if there's more than 25% damage, then a party can, or, or, and a green party can complain. But I, I, I would be, I would be wary of denying a homeowner expansion just because of damage i- if, if, if it doesn't meet a certain criteria. I, I, I have, as a homeowner, I have the right to expand, whether there's damage or not. And so I don't want to lose that privilege or deny another homeowner that privilege just because, let's say, a tree fell on part of their home. It doesn't disqualify me from now that the tree has fallen on a corner of my home for saying, oh, my gosh, that was the living room. Now I want a bigger living room. I may be on a steep slope, but I don't think that should just broadly deny me without proper investigation. So I, I would be a little negligent in, in making that type of claim in our ordinance. I think it should be very deliberate and intentional on an introspection. I think it should be very deliberate and intentional on an introspection of the property in question. It should not be general.
Well, this is a steep slope ordinance. It's not a construction ordinance, and I guess the, you know, the the question becomes, you know, if a property owner who had damage to his property and wants to then do some expansion when he reconstructs, is it going to affect, is it going to create a safety problem for somebody next door? Or down the hill, or up the hill? That's the issue that this ordinance, I think, is trying to address. It's making exceptions. And I just would rather, since Mr. Hess is an expert in this area, and he's the one who prepared this ordinance, it makes sense to have him answering some of these questions. And it may be that in the course of considering some of these questions, he might think in terms of modifying what he's prepared. I don't know. We'll have to wait and see.
Okay. Yeah. Actually, improvements are addressed in item number fifteen.
I had read that before, Councilwoman, yes, about the pools and hot tubs and swimming pools.
So they're going to have to be thirty feet back. So there is a setback requirement, but it's not prohibitive. Well, this is the thing, and I guess we'll have to address this in the question, you own a piece of property, now we pass this ordinance, and now I want to put a pole in. I can't do that anymore. I don't know.
You're on a slope.
If you're on a slope.
At the top of the slope. This was at the top of the slope. That's what we were trying to control.
And so to some point, this speaks to the same conversation we had at the last council meeting when we were talking about the cannabis ordinance, and we were talking about how do we, as a council, deal with imminent, you know, issues that we may not be aware of at the time that we're deliberating. And so, you know, we have recourses for that. So it doesn't, I just feel that if there are exceptions to the rule, are we, at this point, suggesting that there's no recourse, that you can't come before the planning and/or zoning board to ask for an exception? Or how does that work? I think that's the next conversation.
It would become a variance.
A variance.
Exactly. So that's my point. There are remediation avenues if you don't comply. So I think as a general, you know, rule, what are we looking at? We're looking at the fact that West Orange is a very mountainous township, right? We have some steep slopes. We have some issues where we are concerned about development and/or redevelopment. And so to that point, you know, we have to make sure that we are compliant with those areas of concern. It doesn't mean that it's impossible. It just means that there has to be an alternate route.
Yeah, I think Mr. Kaiser is a hundred percent correct that this will become more enlightening when Mr. Hess is able to answer some questions. But I also want to say that this is classic government. What you're talking about here is balancing, and you all may have different opinions on this, balancing the rights of existing property owners to the interests of protecting the slopes, or, you know, properties on the slope, and that's something that you're going to have to discuss and come to a majority view of what you want. And that really is only going to happen through a dialogue with your questions. So this is an ordinance, while we usually try to do ordinances in two seedings, this may end up being one that you can't do in two seasons.
And by the way, that kind of balancing is exactly what the planning board or the zoning board does when it considers a variance. So that's what government does.
Got a vote, right? So do we call the vote?
No, we do not.
You have two votes. You have one to amend, and then one to.
Yeah, I already have the motions on the floor for the amendment, so I'm going to take a vote on that. So Councilwoman Castellino on the amendment only.
I'm sorry, can we just reiterate the amendment that we're making and voting on?
Ken, can you do that?
Yeah, on page five and paragraph twelve, the last sentence of the paragraph, the determination of sloped ability, where it says should, should say shall. Shall include rather than should include. And on page nine, in the section twenty-five dash twenty-eight point nine, adequate contiguous area, it says shall determine whether adequate continuous area, and it should be contiguous area. And frankly, and probably typos that are found by others, including Councilwoman Rutherford, that get sent, may not even need a formal amendment. I'm not going to overly, you know, obsess about this. But I do think that we should try to make any corrections and then probably re-advertise this to be safe. Because I'm guessing this is probably not going to go on until two minutes from now.
So, is there a deadline for any additional amendments before we advertise to the public? Normally, we set a deadline for Friday after a council meeting. Can we do that so that there's not any continued unreadiness for this amendment?
Well, since we're talking about typos, I'm sure all of us are going to be reading it over the next twelve to fourteen hours. So anybody that sees it, if you could just send us an email, well, if ten of us read it, then I'm going to bet that at least five of us find the typos, or at least four. So I think we'll dig that up. It shouldn't take us long to identify.
Yep, okay.
I'm going to take a vote on the amendment. Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Matute Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President McCartney?
Yes.
And now, is there a motion to approve twenty-six seventy-eight dash twenty-two? On first reading?
First reading.
Yes.
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Matute Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President McCartney?
Yes.
Okay, and just to let everyone know, this ordinance has to go before the planning board, and their next meeting is April sixth, which is the day after our first meeting in April, so this ordinance will not be on second and final reading until April twenty-sixth.
That's good.
So if you can get your questions to me as soon as possible, because that, I will, we'll get him to turn the answers around quickly, so in case we all want to talk about alternatives or at the next meeting.
Did you want to bring him into the next meeting in case there's any other changes before I re-advertise? Because this is a ten-page ordinance, and it's costly to advertise, and it's already been advertised once. So if I have to re-advertise in full a second time, I would prefer to have everything finalized before I do that.
I think that's a great point, because we still have questions, and we're expecting John to answer those questions.
I think that's, so I agree with that. I think that we should bring him in.
Right, because then you can still get the ordinance with any changes to the planning board before that meeting, and.
And if I may, Council President, the timelines are really restrictive. I mean, it's just, you know, to get John any questions by tomorrow, if the planning board is meeting, it's just, for me, it's impossible.
Well, the planning, it's not on their agenda for tomorrow.
If it's not on their agenda for tomorrow, then they require a ten-day notice. Planning board requires a ten-day notice for anything to be added to their agenda. So if it hasn't been ten days prior, which obviously they're meeting tomorrow night, it won't be heard.
Yeah, I was told that it would be heard on the sixth of April.
Right, but our questions might not.
Right, that's why I'm suggesting you bring in, yeah, Mr. Hess, the next meeting.
Right.
So you could get, it'll be on their agenda, and then you can get the information to them.
Because our next meeting will be March fifteenth.
Right.
So are we asking for him to come to the March fifteenth meeting?
Yes.
Yes.
And who will be inviting him?
Council President.
Okay.
Beat him tomorrow.
Okay. Perfect. Okay, pending matters, new matters, council discussion.
Councilwoman Williams, you had.
So, yeah, I guess I had a couple things to bring to the forefront. Have not finalized planning, but for Women's History Month, working with a few of our community organizations for a March twentieth Women's History Month event. This will include historical females from not only a West Orange, but historical women who have done some things in the New Jersey government. So working with the West Orange Human Relations Commission, as well as the West Orange African Heritage Commission to bring this to fruition. Again, I apologize, the details have not been quite finalized, but, you know, on the thrust and the cusp of Black History Month and the West Orange African Heritage Organization by ordinance is required to plan a municipal activity, which they did in stellar fashion for the second year of COVID. If you have not had an opportunity to watch, it is both on the West Orange African, I'm sorry, the West Orange Township website, as well as the West Orange Human Relations Commission website. But again, we want to do something to acknowledge women, and so please stay tuned for what's to come in West Orange.
Thank you, thank you. Anything else under pending matters?
I'll say one more thing for pending matters, and that is the Juneteenth celebration for West Orange. We are in the cusp of planning for Juneteenth celebration for the township of West Orange. As you know, there were several different activities that were held in twenty-twenty-one to celebrate Juneteenth. We had our first annual flag raising for Juneteenth that was hosted by the West Orange Human Relations Commission in partnership with the NAACP of the Oranges and Maplewood Chapter. And so last year, they hosted an event at West Orange Public Library that featured a person who gave their personal account of Juneteenth from their historical research and living perspective. Not sure what each individual organization is going to bring to the table for twenty-twenty-two, but what we have created is a committee so that West Orange will host a myriad of activities for Juneteenth. As we know, Juneteenth is the historical representation of the emancipation of the slaves, the last indication for those who lived in Texas who had not been informed that they were no longer in slavery. And so with that, we want to celebrate Juneteenth in West Orange. That is something that was brought to West Orange community by our youth organization after the death of George Floyd. We also hosted activities in twenty-twenty-one to celebrate Juneteenth. And for twenty-twenty-two, what we would like to do in West Orange is have an organized weekend of events. And so please, West Orange residents, stay tuned for what different organizations are going to bring together for an acknowledgement of that celebration and national holiday. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. I guess that leads right into our council liaison announcements, because I served on that Juneteenth committee as a representative of the West Orange Arts Council, because last year they did have their Black Lives Matter exhibit up for that month. And there was also the youth caucus had their music festival at Colgate, and the library had their speaker series. The flag raising on Town Hall that you just mentioned, there was a lot. So the committee, I'm pleased to serve on the committee to help organize all the different things, and we've only just had a preliminary meeting, and it seems like it's still growing and growing from maybe a one-day event to a weekend to possibly a week-long event. Yet to be determined. And just even with the Arts Council, they're having a meeting with great success with the Classic Film Festival, Sunday afternoons at the AMC Theater. Please visit the West Orange Classic Film Festivals if you like tickets. There are two weeks left. They have also guest speakers there as well before the start of each film. And the Arts Council, they have worked, they've created so many partnerships currently, well, like I said, with the Film Festival, the Jewish Services, the Way Center for developmentally disabled adults, they have their event going on through March, and again, planning for this Juneteenth. The planning board is meeting tomorrow night on Zoom at seven-thirty. And the West Orange Environmental Commission, we are prepping for our, I think it's our twelfth annual Earth Hour event. Earth Hour is that global phenomenon where there are over two hundred countries and millions of people that participate on the last Saturday of March, March twenty-sixth, to raise awareness and make people cognizant of preserving, conserving energy and preserving your planet. On March twenty-sixth, at eight-thirty through nine-thirty PM, to turn your lights out just for one hour, and all over the world, the millions of people, and non-essential lights on significant buildings, like the Eiffel Tower and the Empire State Building, and so many structures participate. And it really just seems amazing to see that view. If you go to earthhour.org and see what that looks like, the earth going dark. It really does raise awareness. So the Environmental Commission has guest speakers come to the Friends of Edison National Historic Park. Students, guest speakers. We're trying to establish the date with Thomas Edison National Historic Park. But everyone can participate on March twenty-sixth to turn your lights out for one hour at eight-thirty. I just jumped in with council announcements. If anyone has any, anyone else has any announcements to be made? Councilwoman Castellino, no? Councilman? Okay. Then what's left?
Can I, before we go, and I'll make it quick, I don't want to belabor the council liaison appointments. I do want to note something, and maybe you guys can correct me if I'm wrong. At the beginning of the meeting, there was some talk about the historic nature of the women that are serving on this council now. I don't think that, and you will correct me if I'm wrong, I don't think we've ever had, until this council that's currently constructed, four women serving as council members at the same time. That, in fact, is historic. It should be celebrated. The only time it'll be changed, and I'm glad it's not now, because obviously I wouldn't be on the commission, on the council. The only way that'll be changed is if we have a complete council run by women. I'm not saying that would be a bad thing. It'd probably be a good thing. But I do want to celebrate you for, in Women's History Month, for the historic nature of the composition of this council. And in that regard, I want to celebrate West Orange for doing it too, because West Orange had to vote you here. So, you know, happy Women's History Month, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman.
Yeah, you're the anomaly. Yeah, we're going to call you out. We're going to tell you, we're going to tell you, you're the anomaly. Like, it's the women's world all month, every day for thirty-one days. We get to tell you how you are one of those, what is it called, a unicorn? So today you are a unicorn for the next thirty-one days.
My entire life, I have a wife, three daughters, I'm the only man in the house. I grew up with two sisters. I was the only boy.
And now look at you. You feel right at home. You feel right at home.
I'm good. I'm very good with this composition, absolutely.
So, and I do appreciate you pointing out, as we indicated earlier, this is a historic moment. This is March first. This is the beginning of Women's History Month. We have voted in something in West Orange that is unique to West Orange, that is indeed historical. And so we, as a township, should be commended. This leadership opportunity is phenomenal. We have done an amazing job, and albeit our mayor is a man. And albeit our mayor is a man, we still are rocking downtown West Orange and making some transformational changes in our township. So kudos to the women in leadership in West Orange. Susan McCartney, Michelle Castellino, Cindy Matute Brown, and of course, yours truly, Tammy Williams. We are doing the D thing. Thank you.
Even my dog is a girl.
I do want to interject, Council President, if I may. I would be, we would all be remiss if we don't celebrate our Madam Clerk, who no one understands the workload that weighs on her shoulders.
Thank you.
It is amazing. I, 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 I love Karen. Madam Clerk, you are phenomenal. You answer all of our questions before hours, after hours, weekends. And, and I know you're not on payroll at that time, but the work you do for the council is greatly appreciated. I'm glad that I get to serve with you.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate that.
Absolutely. I second that emotion.
Thank you. What's your dog's name?
This is Pepper.
Pepper.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Yes.
Bill can do that.
Okay.
All right.
Bill and Pepper?
Yeah, so moved.
And I will second that motion.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Good night, West Orange.
Good night, Pepper.
Good night, everybody.